We're live in five, four, three.
Good evening and welcome to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting tonight on December 15th, 2021. If you would please verify a quorum for me, please, sir?
All members are present.
Thank you very much. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the review of the minutes. Do I have any comments or questions or anything regarding the review of the minutes? Mr. Chairman? Trustee Barnes?
I do. I reviewed the minutes. I would request the removal of all references of who seconds a motion. The minutes need only reflect that the motion was seconded. Minutes reflect business that was accomplished. Let me parenthetically, I'm sorry, I made the motion. Do I need to make a motion to do this?
To edit the...
Yes.
Minutes, you make a motion. We'll see if there's a second, and then we may have discussion, sir. And you have the first opportunity to discussion.
I'll second.
We have a second on your motion. Trustee Barnes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, I want to make the point that a second to a motion does not mean that the member who makes the second is in favor of the motion, only that at least one other member would like to engage in the debate. It is often construed that a person who seconds a motion is actually in favor. The minutes should only include the name of the member who seconds when requested by the chair, is my understanding. Similarly, but probably much less likely, I'd like the board to consider the possibility that a member making a motion may not end up voting in favor of the final form of a motion after it has been fully debated, although minutes must report who made the motion and the exact wording of the motion. So I also question whether we do have the exact wording of each motion in those minutes. So, the only time the minutes will reflect who voted is if there is a roll call vote. Otherwise, pass and fail is all that needs to be reported. So, in summary, just a removal of who has seconded motions and making sure that the exact wording of the motions that were passed is accurately recorded.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Barnes. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie?
I believe it was September 22nd date, or whatever that board meeting was. We had conversations about the minutes because they didn't get approved for one or two meetings, and I was under the impression that we would simplify our minutes quite a bit to be statements of facts. And these seem to not, they seem to possess more than that as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Howard?
I guess I'm going to speak in opposition to the motion. We're a small community college. We're in a town that people, actually more and more people are coming to our meetings. They want to know what's going on. You've got to report who made the motion. That doesn't mean that the person supports it. I would agree. Sometimes people make motions in order to make sure that debate is undertaken with regard to a particular issue, and they may or may not support it. But, the fact that they make the motion allows us to debate it. The fact that there's a second allows us to debate it. I don't know what the purpose would be in keeping secret, or at least not in the minutes, who seconded the motion. It's kind of like saying who spoke on the motion. And we're not going to put all of that information in the minutes. It's supposed to be a factual recitation of what the motion was, who made the motion, and what the outcome was. I see no problem with putting on there who seconded the motion.
All right. Response.
Chairman Banducci?
Trustee Barnes?
Just in response, the previous trustee has made very good points. And what I am preparing us to deal with is following some specific guidelines that we will address later. So, when we get to the vote, that's fine. I don't see anything specifically problematic with the meeting minutes. It was simply a request to remove the names of who seconds the motion.
Trustee McKenzie?
I think it's wise, I don't know why anyone would even refer to trying to keep something secret at this board. That seems a little ridiculous. But I think it's wise, and I know the board has funding for this and a dedicated line item for it, to either, the minutes are supposed to be just simply that, that the minutes, and I think Robert's Rules of Orders here in front of us describes what the minutes are for a reason. But I'd say there's a whole community, like the American Sign Language community, and people who don't necessarily have auditory hearing, that I think they would benefit either by acquiring a sign language person at our meetings, or maybe better so people can reference the meetings in the future is a full transcript of our meetings. So, I mean...
Point of order, Chairman? This discussion is not germane to the motion. Okay. Thank you for your point of order. That would be another topic to discuss regarding the ASL, I think. I also am under the impression, just give me a second, that because we're Zooming these meetings, that they are preserved in their entirety. So we have essentially a full set of minutes, if you will, because the entire meeting is now archived and available in real time, and we also post it. In the past, we'd had it, and it would show up on the TV stations sometime in the rear over the next month, and we could go and you could see the, on the playlist on the NIC page. But right now, we've got it not just posted, but we've got it live, so. But to your point on that, Trustee McKenzie, I think the idea, and Mr. Lyons, I think you were part of this discussion too, was that we were going to try to trim down the minutes as much as possible to kind of what the minimum requirements were, just for...
Mr. Chairman, if I may since you referenced me. I agree that minutes do not need the entire context and the back and forth, but I think some context is necessary. So I wouldn't recommend deleting the, you know, entire context of the discussions.
Certainly. Well, certainly a place to try to strike a balance is something we've been talking about and trying to shorten a little bit, and we did that with some of the minutes already previously, so something we can work on going forward. Trustee Barnes, may I ask you a question, sir? Are, with what you just said in response to Trustee Howard's comments, are you thinking to wait and act on this more later on the agenda when we get to the Robert's Rules of Orders? Or are you still, would like your motion to be acted on at this time regarding the minutes?
Chairman Banducci, I really did not expect all this discussion over something so simple.
I understand.
So, you know, it was a simple, I would move to the previous question to just vote on taking out the second names or not.
All right.
Move to the previous question, please.
Okay. Are you calling the question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any need to repeat the motion, or is everybody comfortable with what the motion said? Okay? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
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 Chair will vote aye. Stay consistent with trying to trim down the minutes as much as possible as we previously agreed to.
Mr. Chair?
Next item on the agenda?
Hi.
Your microphone on?
Oh, I think, yeah, it is. Mr. Chair?
Trustee Wood.
Just that last statement that you made, maybe that would be something on a future agenda, but I don't, I was just going to, under discussion, say that we haven't discussed trimming down the minutes. I'm fine with his motion and how it turned out, but we have not had a discussion of we're going to shorten our minutes, so. If you want to put that on the next agenda, we could have that discussion.
Trustee Wood. It seemed to me that was one of the very substances of the discussion we had when, two parts of Trustee McKenzie's desire to edit prior minutes, and we had stacked up five, six, eight sets of minutes, I don't remember the exact number was, he had some concerns regarding detail and accuracy. And then, as a result of that discussion, it came back where Mr. Lyons briefed us on what is the minimum requirement of the minutes and what we actually had to have, and that his recommendation, as I recall, was to put in what we needed to have and really know more, and that some of the extra stuff may not be necessary, and we could shorten the minutes and be a little more concise with the minutes. So I do believe that's consistent with the discussion we had, and even the advice of Mr. Lyons. Though, I don't know that we've determined exactly how to do that or what that looks like, so that'll continue to be a work in progress.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comment.
Chairman Banducci?
Trustee Barnes?
I would like to make a movement to move public comments to after the completion of our new business.
All right. That would put it just prior to the board chair report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, discussion, oh, is there a second? Sorry.
Right now, I have a motion that was just made. I do not have a second yet.
Do you want to second it, Kristi, to open discussion? You have to say.
Well, I don't need you to second it. I mean, if no one agrees, then it works.
Trustee Wood, are you seconding the motion?
No.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion, open discussion. I'm curious what Kristi has to say, or Trustee Wood has to say.
Trustee McKenzie has seconded the motion. The motion is on the floor for discussion. Trustee Barnes, since it's your motion, you have the first discussion.
Thank you, Trustee Banducci. It's important to have public comments, and we will. Public comments sometimes take significant time, which puts addressing critical business to later in the evening when people are beginning to tire and as the hour gets late. Personally, I would like to ensure that I give my best attention to the agenda items at hand and get them closed and off the table, so I can then give my undivided attention to those who have requested time to address the board. In this way, I'm not being distracted by thoughts and concerns about the hour and how the rest of the meeting will go. So, my objective is to make sure that we give full attention to our business items, get them off the table, and then be able to give our full attention to those who have prepared statements for the board. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Comments or discussions? Yes, Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Trustee Barnes, I guess, my feeling on this after, oh my gosh, 20 years of being a public official, is the public is here to speak about several items on the agenda that they want us to consider their input before we make a decision. That's why they're here. And I would suggest that we do, as public officials, work for the public. We are not the master. We are here to take the input. I myself have sat through hours and hours of public testimony. That's our job. And I'm in not favor of limiting or moving it for our convenience. The convenience is of the public. I think it's important we listen to what they have to say before we make our decisions.
Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Trustee Howard?
My difficulty with the motion is not necessarily its position on the agenda, but the chair insisted, as I understand it, a limit of 20 minutes for all public comment. And that sort of flies in the face of Trustee Barnes's comments about how much he'd like to hear all of the public's comments and be fresh and be done with their ordinary business. So I'm going to oppose the motion unless it's amended, and I could move to amend it, to remove the 20-minute limitation that the chair put on the public comment. I think that's totally inappropriate. We've got a lot of people here, you're going to limit them to two minutes apiece, and it may well go over 20 minutes. And I think we ought to give everybody who signed up an opportunity to make public comment, so I'm going to oppose moving it to the back and keeping the 20-minute, 20-minute limitation on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? If I can make a clarification here on this, we have a, the board has a policy on meetings, which is 2.01.03, that has a, was essentially a recommended order of business. Now, this is not rigid, I'm just telling you, this is in the policy. One is convene the meeting, two is approval of minutes, three is public comment, four is unfinished business, et cetera. So that is, and I wanted the board members to be aware of the, again, of the policy on meetings, as it may reflect on different people's views of the change, proposed change. Thank you.
Well, I have maybe a compromise to this. I'd actually like people to hear some of what's going on, because I think a lot of people are misinformed. And so maybe if they are able to hear tonight, if they choose to speak, they will speak more as, from an informed position. We only have 12 people signed up right now, so at two minutes apiece, that would be 24 minutes. So we would be exceeding the 20 minutes that we put on there by four minutes. I think that's a reasonable amount, if the compromise that we do go ahead and move the public comment to the back of the meeting, but we will allow all 12 people who have signed up, they're allocated two minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Standing by a slight bit.
Mr. Chair, under discussion, I'm just speaking to Trustee Barnes's motion, not to a compromise. I just can't imagine why we would ask these people to wait through our business meeting and not have any input about what we're deciding. We have spent a year of shutting, not we, you have spent a year of shutting the public out, and this just feels like, once again, we're being very disrespectful. There's going to be people out there that say things that maybe I don't want to hear or I won't like. That doesn't matter. They are taxpayers and our citizens, and they deserve to be heard, and they deserve to be heard by the board before we deliberate on all of these issues.
Chairman Banducci?
Trustee Barnes?
I'm going to shock the heck out of you all. Your points are very well taken, and I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Trustee McKenzie, do you withdraw your second?
Sure.
Point of order, I don't think that that is a requirement unless somebody wants to correct me from Robert's Rules.
You may be correct. I'm trying to remember now. Yep. Original motion.
You're right.
Withdrawn.
Well, right now, it's the guideline, so.
Because we have the issue with Ken the other day, whether he withdraw his second.
Just consider it.
All right. After consideration, we will consider the withdrawal of the original motion as the withdrawal of the second. All right. Let's see. Mark, would you?
So, we're at the point of public comment, and as I have often done in the past, and I will do again, I want to remind everybody in the public that this is a business meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is not a public hearing as such. The public comment is, will be taken here, and within the rules that have been set out two minutes, it's important that public comment be limited to items on the board agenda for tonight's meeting. So, with that, I would ask that everybody that has, is going to make public comment, that those comments be respectful and courteous, and make your points as you should, and we'll go forward from there. But recall, it's a business meeting, let's keep the level of professionalism and respect that it deserves. Thank you.
And since Mark and I had talked about this along with Dr. Sabalia, that was the perfect segue for the little bit that I'm going to add to that about maintaining proper decorum and respect. We've gotten a little out of hand with public comment in the past, so we've changed the procedure slightly tonight. If you choose to get out of hand and be disrespectful, call names, do things that are inappropriate, they are prepared to cut your mic, you will be muted, the Zoom will be turned off. We have security that will be positioned should you need to be escorted from the podium and/or from the room. So I would hope that everybody would act with appropriate respect and decorum, and you'll be just fine. I would hate to have to gavel you down tonight. So, on that note, I have 12 names. I will still go ahead and give the two minutes to everybody under the circumstances. First one up is Deborah Rose.
Good evening. Quality public service is being mature enough to put the needs of others above one's own and to demonstrate integrity and selflessness in service to others. Our NIC students are not the political pawns the majority of this board has made them. They are our community's most valuable resource. This community depends on them to provide us a skilled workforce. It is ethically unacceptable how this board's majority is living out its personal political agenda and its personal issues at the expense of our students. It's clear the three of you have zero interest in NIC student success. It is furthermore clear you three also are not able to effectively perform in a manner that serves this community's best interests above your own self-serving agenda. Michael Barnes, it is not Christian to be pretending to be something you are not, as you have done more than once. It is time you stop.
Please, we will not attack individual trustees personally. That is inappropriate. Your time is done. Thank you.
Let me finish the rest of what I was going to say, please, Todd.
Can you do it?
Please, yeah.
Can you do it in a civil manner?
I will do my best. Okay?
Please.
Well, while having had numerous conversations with your wife, she shared with me you have been residing in Arizona other than during the summer months.
Please, now you're drawing in his wife.
Yes, Todd, this is an important issue about trustee residency.
His residency.
I have important information to share. I have personal experiences that the board needs to hear, Todd.
You have had plenty of opportunity.
No, I have not. You have cut me off, Todd. And if you don't let me speak now, I will go to the press with this, and more people will hear what I have to say, and you know that. Now, you only cut me off because you don't like the facts that I have to share.
You are done. Please, step away.
No, I'm not done. You haven't heard the last thing.
Suggestions on that one?
Mr. Chair?
Next person up is Judith Hannah. Judith, you have a topic of gathering place protection, but I'm not quite sure how that plays to the agenda.
I'm sorry, State Board of Education.
I'm sorry, say that again.
State Board of Education.
That's not on the, it's not on the agenda. I'm sorry.
That's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda. I have nothing regarding the State Board of Education on tonight's agenda.
I was unable to open the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize that you were not able to do that. Unfortunately, the topic you're addressing is not on tonight's agenda, and it would not be appropriate because it's not germane to one of the topics tonight.
Maybe. The State Board of Education has been addressing accreditation. Could it be NWCCU site visit that you want to talk about related accreditation?
Yes, I can address that as well. I know the State Board of Education was here in a meeting with the Board of Trustees this morning.
No, that's not correct. They had a meeting down in Boise, I believe, and I believe Dr. Sabalia might have been on that meeting. I did talk with the State Board of Education last week, the chairman of the board and the director.
Would it just be all right if I made my statement, please?
Well, I would like to know what it regards as appropriate.
Hinjapkeen, which means the gathering place, which is where we are, which is sacred land of the Coeur d'Alene tribe. And the responsibility of trustees.
Thoughts on this one?
Is to be trustees and to honor, respect, and further education and the purposes for which we gather. Hinjapkeen is the gathering place for Coeur d'Alene Indian tribe for untold centuries to dance, feast, play, and fish on this spot, in this area, until 1878. I'm a graduate of NIC, 1985. I received my associate degree. My daughter, who was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, is a Coeur d'Alene graduate, Lake City High School, graduated with her associate degree in 2011. In 2013, she received her bachelor's social work right here on this campus, LCSC. Her graduation was in the auditorium. 2015, she graduated with her master's of social work, BSU, Boise State University. And so we have a vested interest in the regard of this campus, its integrity, its use, the intention of the Board of Trustees. And my granddaughter is now a freshman, Willow's daughter, who was also born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, is a freshman on campus right now. And her credits are extremely, extremely precious to her as they are to us. Right now, Oregon, University of Oregon is not accepting the AA degree from NIC. I know that's not usual. No, it is true. Yes, it is true, because she's already been accepted at University of Oregon. So I'm just saying, we've made so much progress. The Board of Trustees, the people who are in a position of leadership have been entrusted with the better, for the greater good.
You're at about two and a half minutes. Thank you for sharing with us.
I'm sorry, I thought I was going to speak for three minutes, but I was unable to come last month.
I understand.
Because of the windstorm and no power. Thank you for listening.
You bet. Next on the agenda is Anne Seddon.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's my first time here. With all respect, it's my belief that NWCCU is taking community out of our community college. The announcement that they will be distributing comments and opinion forms only to the present students and staff is ignoring we, the taxpayers, residents, and voters of Cootney County. These responses will likely be prejudiced by fear of losing accreditation and from outside controlling force. They will be tainted by the staff and faculty actions and the dialogue, and obviously one-sided media. Fear leads to fight and flight. The involvement of the NWCCU has created fear and will likely create flight of students. I suggest that the commission consider not limiting distribution of questionnaires just to present students. And in conjunction with this, the seriousness of this is that the media, in conjunction with special interest groups, have really tainted the atmosphere of our community. It makes me really sad to see that once again, they're creating a division for political game and possible nullification of the voter's choice. And we need to respect voter's choice as far as trustees. I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
You're doing, everybody, doing a good job.
Thank you.
Can I comment?
Dr. Sabalia, I think.
And I acknowledge and hear what you're saying, and I appreciate what you have to say, and I will talk about this later in the meeting. The NWCCU vis- The NWCCU visit is the NWCCU's visit. They call the shots on who gets to be involved in this. This is not NIC choosing to not include the community. This is the NWCCU visit. And they set up the forums, they set up who they're gonna talk to, and they set the guidelines on who they're taking feedback from. Nobody in the NIC administration, nobody on this board, had anything to do with that. This is the NWCCU's meeting, and they're setting the ground rules for that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I'm glad you clarified that. I became aware of that today, and I just think the community really needs just to understand my fear of community being cut out of our community college. Because at that point, we might as well be a state college. Thank you.
Next on the list is Austin Smith. Austin, you're gonna speak to the NWCCU also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, trustees, for letting me speak. I appreciate that you're willing to listen to your constituents and students. My name is Austin Smith. I'm a dual-credit student at both Coeur d'Alene High School and North Idaho College. I would like to speak about the NWCCU's accreditation visit. There's been a lot of fear in my friend group recently. I try to keep up with these meetings more than most, clearly, because I'm coming to them. And I've had a few friends ask me recently, "Austin, are my credits gonna be valid?" And I have to look at them in the eyes and say, "I don't know." And that is a terrifying experience, not only for me, but for the hundreds of other students that are in my position. And I won't pretend that I can do your guys' job, I could never. You guys are valuable service members to this community, and I applaud you for all that you are willing to do. So my statement here tonight is really a request, that you guys continue to do the great work you do, and that you do everything in your power to make sure that my credits are valid, and that my two years that I'm spending at NIC are worthwhile. That's all. Thank you.
One more. I think Dr. Sabaly might have something, and then I want to share something real quick, too.
Austin, I want to clarify that throughout this entire process, your credits will be good, okay? Any credits that you earn in the spring will be good as well. As long as we're going through this process, NIC keeps their accreditation, and your credits will transfer and serve you wherever you decide to go.
And Austin, I applaud you for staying up on current events, and engaging and participating. I don't know if you had the opportunity to be here at the last meeting. I had read something, I'm gonna share a brief of it again, and I had mentioned to the media that I'd love to have seen it out in ink, and I never did. I'm a little disappointed by that. I drew a quote from the Spokesman Review, from an article by Greg Mason, that was out in November, I believe it was on the 11th. And it was a quote from Dr. Ramswami. It says, "Revocation of an institution's accreditation, if it were to occur, is an outcome based on a very detailed process that could take a few years." And then I also shared, where we had an email from a concerned student, and in the response to that student, which I thought was an excellent response, we said, "Thank you for your concerns. I want to alleviate some of the concerns, answer your questions. We're currently in good standing with the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. There's a process the commission uses to review colleges that may be out of compliance with standards and eligibility requirements. The commission provides the college an opportunity to take corrective action, remain in good standing. NIC is working to correct the current areas of concern. It would likely take two to three years for the college to lose accreditation if NIC does not correct the areas of concern. If you graduate or transfer from NIC, while it is in good standing, your credits will transfer to a four-year college or university," as Dr. Sabaly just mentioned. And they had asked about tuition reimbursement, and they said, "There's currently no reason to consider tuition reimbursement. We remain a quality institution of higher education. I firmly believe the education you receive at NIC will serve you for the rest of your life. Hope this information is helpful if you have questions." And that's from our president's cabinet level, that's where that response came from. And I reiterate that, I would hope the media would again share that message, that yes, they're gonna come visit us in January. Originally, they asked for additional information in August. And I would say that while we take it very serious, and why it is concerns, I think if the sky had been falling, they would have come the next week or after something the next month. It's a process, there's time, and even when they come in January, my understanding is, it's gonna take them a while to process that information. We're not gonna see something for a month, or two, or three. And so, right now, you're fine.
Thank you.
Next person on the agenda is Mr. William Lee.
Chairman Banducci, President Sabaly, Board of Trustees, thanks for letting me come talk. So, I'm gonna say something that will maybe blow your mind, or maybe you already kind of know this. Board of Trustees, you guys might know this to maybe some degree. So, I think a popular topic that we've been talking about tonight was the Accreditation Board, NWCCU. They're the people who accreditate the school. So if they choose not to, which supposedly is gonna take a while, if in the worst-case scenario, they choose not to, it would really put the school in a lot of jeopardy, a lot of like, unneeded trouble. So how did the accreditation organization here about NIC? Well, they actually got two complaints. I don't know if any of you guys know where the complaints came from. They came from an organization called Cootney County Task Force for Human Relations. One of these members on the Board of Trustees is the president of that organization. Let me repeat this again. This organization is the only organization that has submitted two complaints to the accreditation board, to bring all this like, kinda heat and all this shade to the school. It was only one organization. One of the trustees on this board is the president of that organization that's bringing the complaints against the accreditation organization. Now, I don't know if you know that, but when I learned about that, that was mind-blowing. It is insane, because that trustee has been complaining about everything that the chairman is doing, is gonna put the school in jeopardy, you know, a lot of worrying and pearl-clutching. But that same person has moved their organization to put the school in jeopardy. I just want to state that for the record. I don't know if you guys know that, members of the public. I don't know if you were roped in by your friends, you may have good intentions, which is great. You should be involved in civics. But I just want you guys to know, verify it. It's easily, you can verify this very easily. And I just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Matthew Nolan.
Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Matthew Nolan, I'm the radiography program director here at North Idaho College. The program directors of the health profession are concerned about the trajectory of North Idaho College. We prepared a letter that we will submit to each of you in email. Recently, the college's relationship with our community, healthcare partners, and students has eroded. As program directors of accredited healthcare programs, we are responsible for achieving and maintaining specific third-party programmatic accreditations. Our graduates are not employable without both the institutional accreditation and program-specific accreditation. In our formal letter, we will address five main concerns, but I want to focus on one tonight. We are concerned about NIC's inability to fulfill the needs of our healthcare partners. Currently here in North Idaho, our healthcare community is under an unsustainable strain. There are over 400 vacancies currently in radiology, surgical technology, medical assisting, dental hygiene, physical therapy assisting, and medical lab technology. These numbers do not even include the nursing vacancies that we have. If NIC loses its accreditation, all of our health professions programs will immediately close. The loss of these programs would be catastrophic to our already strained healthcare system. It is vital that NIC continue to graduate high-quality healthcare workers, who will uphold the highest standards of patient care. As a unified health professions division, we take responsibility for our students and our programs, and we respectfully ask that the Board of Trustees consider the greater consequences their actions have on our community, and responsibly take the corrective measures required by NWCCU to maintain our accreditation. We invite the trustees to meet with us to discuss our concerns in greater detail. Thank you.
Matthew, if I may, we certainly support the nursing program, as evidenced by the construction next door. I think we're spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million on the Meyer Health expansion and upgrade. As some of you know, I went to bat for a number of our nurses, called Mr. Rasmussen directly at Northwest Specialty Hospital, engaged, got Dr. Burns. We were all working together, trying to get all our folks the clinicals they needed, because there were some challenges there regarding masks and immunizations and other things. I've also offered to try to work on differential pay, to get more nursing instructors, and to try to help both in the CT umbrella in general, but certainly in the nursing, because I know we have a challenge with getting instructors. And if I could wave my magic wand and get those jobs filled, I would. You're aware of the local challenges, whether it be housing or just people to work, you know? So, know that the board is aware of these issues, and like I say, when I found out, and I had some of the nurses come to me, and I have a cousin whose wife's a nurse, and her best friend's a nurse, and her daughter's one of our nurses that this affects. So, I got calls, and it's like, "Okay, cousin, let's help these students." And I was on the phone, and for a couple days, you know, we were pretty engaged, and then our team took it, and we ran, and they ran with it. But that was one of the things I took at my office as a priority, ahead of my own business. So we are trying, there's things we can work. I just gotta tell you, there's so much of this that's out of our reach, as you probably know. And I understand we're gonna hear more about the project, we'll get an update. I don't want to say anything prematurely, but I know there's some things about that that we're gonna hear. I just want that facility to be fully utilized, and for us to be able to produce as many nurses as we can, because I know our area needs it. Mr. Chairman. Certainly, certainly.
I definitely wanted to just point out that, you know, our biggest concern is that we know that we have a community need, and this college is a community college, and our sole goal is to meet the needs of the community. So, as our program directors, we're looking towards the biggest goal, which is meeting the healthcare needs of our community, and that's what we're referencing tonight. Like, if we lose our accreditation, it makes it very difficult.
And as we've all said before, we don't want that to happen. Did you want to speak, sir?
Point of inquiry.
Oh, yes, please.
Just in the interest of time, and.
I know, and I've dragged that out.
I don't know if it's appropriate for the Board to be responding to every single, it's gonna take forever.
No, you're correct. I apologize. Just some of these are such important, and I know the community is very interested in what's going on behind the scenes. It's hard for everybody to know. Did you have something, Trustee Howard?
Only to echo what Trustee Barnes, you were taking a lot of time telling him about things that you did that had nothing to do with his comment. So I would appreciate us staying on topic.
Sorry, that should have been "us." The only thing about me was talking to Mr. Rasmussen, everything else was "us," hopefully in supporting the nursing program, because I don't think I voted for the Meyer Health expansion by myself. Unless I did, I don't remember that.
Mr. Chair.
I did vote for like, Parker, which you didn't, but.
Same objection, Your Honor.
All right, next speaker is.
Mr. Chair, and just to add on to that.
Trustee Wood, yes.
Thank you. The board does not normally respond to public comment, and I agree with Trustee Barnes, we've spent a lot of time responding to public comment. We need to listen to the speakers.
Okay. I will say this, everybody's been concerned that there's not been enough information, and they like to be aware. The community's been asking questions. We have people, again, speaking, trying to educate, so people can communicate and not be ignorant to the facts and of what's going on. So I think a little information goes a long way. I think tonight's a chance to try to inform the community, and I think we're trying to do that. Hopefully, it's helpful. Mr. Howard Coons is the next speaker. And if I don't, I'll be accused of not talking, so we go either way.
I wanted to agree with William Lee, what he said about, the only reason that there is any fear about loss of accreditation is because of some complaints. And there doesn't seem to be any substance to that. The only thing I really know about all this is what I read in the paper. And one of the things that I would like to point out, that also concerns our accreditation, is that the paper tries to make it seem as though everything is just all messed up here. But my understanding is that the former president had a contract that involved, a part of that contract involved being terminated without cause. And that was okay. It was in the contract, as long as he was paid, if he was terminated without cause. And my understanding is, he did get paid. So, why he has brought a suit, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, this is off-topic.
It is to a point, but part of the accreditation issue has been this issue with the change of leadership, so.
Right.
It seems to me it's germane.
My point is just that, to me, that suit is another one of the things that creates this whole concept that there's something wrong here, and perhaps we might lose our accreditation. But it seems to me that things are going fine.
Next person on the list is Russ McLean.
You can hear me through this mask, okay? All right. Well, you know, I've been in and out of the hospital, I'm a regular now.
No, I understand.
Republican virus, you guys own it. You know, these kids in the medical, they're training and going to school, working over there, they're nervous. I want you to know that. But anyway, I come to talk about the Head Start, that's on your agenda item, and I'm just gonna ask, you guys are in enough doo-doo, that was polite, my professionalism stopped at four o'clock. You know, you guys are in deep, Todd. We've been friends a long time, so I'm gonna speak frank. I don't want you guys even touch it. You know, do the grant, and let Head Start run Head Start. That early-year education is so important, especially for the kids that got no money. And I don't, you guys, you know, you got a nice tan for an Idaho boy. I don't want you guys touching it. I want you to leave it alone until you sift through the pile of shit you got yourself into, okay? Please, for the kids. And I'm proud of you. I don't care what he says. We've been here a long time, and your human rights is an important thing.
Thank you.
And it takes a lot of guts to do what you do.
Thank you, Russ.
Don't let anybody give you any crap, okay? All right, that's all I got to say, Todd. Don't leave them alone, okay? Sift through this mess first.
The next name on the list is Sierra Platt.
Hi, it's nice to finally see you in person. My name is Sierra Platt, and I'm a current student at NIC with two young babies and the campus childcare. Since returning to school this fall, I did want to inform you of what I will be speaking about when NWCCU comes to the college on behalf of the student. I met with Dr. Sabaly on Monday, and I wanted to share this at the board meeting as well. Since returning to school this fall, my education has dramatically shifted. What was once a place of critical thinking and healthy discussions in my classrooms has now shifted to an atmosphere where I feel like political opinions of a few board members have challenged professors and made them afraid to allow their students to think critically. This should come as no surprise, considering that they watched as Dr. McLennan lost his job without cause. These careless decisions don't represent all of the college, and they only represent the egos of, I feel, an irresponsible chairman. We have a really good institution here. And with that being said, I came here to look at you and be able to tell you that, if you don't step down, or you don't begin to work with the community and the others, and listen to what we really have to say as far as accreditation goes, I and many others are gonna fight you the entire way. So please, please listen to the community with our care, and the students primarily.
Next up. Next up is Mr. Dan Gukin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, trustees, normal people. Robert's Rules of Order, 700 pages. In my experience, decades of politics here, I find there are a lot of people who love to thump this book, and these are usually people who want to feel really important, because they haven't read the book and understood the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order and what it's supposed to facilitate as far as getting businesses done. This is a very small body. I would argue that Robert's Rules should never apply to it, and so did General Robert. Right up front, in small boards and committees, most parliamentary rules apply, but certain modifications permitting greater flexibility and informality are commonly allowed. This is elaborated on in Section 49, which is specifically procedure for small boards. In a board meeting where there are not more than a dozen members present, some of the formality that is necessary in a large assembly would likely hinder business. It goes on to mention some of the, shall we say, slop that should occur on a smaller board in order to facilitate getting work done, unless, of course, it is the goal here to make things more complex and confusing.
I'm not quite sure how to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry.
Lenarte.
Lenarte, did I get that? Okay, and you're going to speak on Head Start.
My name is Amanda, and I've lived in Coeur d'Alene since 1992. I'm a proud 2019 graduate of NIC and a 2020 graduate of LCSC with a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. I have three amazing children, ages six, four, and one. Not only have all three of my children received early Head Start or Head Start services, but they also attended the Children's Center at North Idaho College. To say Head Start and the Children's Center were absolutely pivotal in not only my educational journey, but my journey as a parent would be an understatement. Some of you may know how demanding a nursing education is, and meeting those demands and the demands of life with young children would have been beyond my abilities without the crucial support of both the Children's Center and Head Start. It goes without saying that the ongoing pandemic has disproportionately affected student parents. Now the student parents of NIC are facing the added obstacle of political influence spilling into the vital low-income childcare resource available here. Here, in an area statistically void of not only essential resources but quality education, as Idaho now ranks a depressing dead last in education in our country. And you want to risk losing an invaluable resource that removes barriers to education for student parents over a politicized piece of fabric children couldn't care less about without the influence of indoctrinating adults. Shame on you. I forfeit the rest of my time. Thank you.
Dan, is that you, Dan English?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. English is our last speaker.
Thank you. I'm Dan English, born and raised here, proud graduate of NIC. My last job before I went into semi-retirement was as the Director of North Idaho College Area Agency on Aging. Often, when I would talk to folks and would say, yeah, I'm running the Area Agency on Aging, we do a lot of good things for elderly senior folks in the five northern counties, and besides all of the other great things that NIC does, they have Head Start on one end and the Area Agency on the other, and people were very happy and pleased with that as I am, that the college does a lot of things. A lot of my family has gone there and graduated, but also, they're much bigger than just the college. And I've been in your seats many, many times. I'm a current city council member, I've been at the county, I've been a school board trustee, so I know what it's like to deal with things. I know what it's like to deal with federal regulations and things that come with the territory, and there are trade-offs. And there's always going to be some things that, you know, we can swallow that or not swallow that, but I have to tell you that the community relies on Head Start, and if that is threatened, I'm concerned. Just as I'm concerned that if you do that to Head Start, you do that with Area Agency or anything else that the college touches that might have something to do with federal requirements that maybe you don't personally like. I think you're going to be in a very difficult position to explain to the taxpayers when they want to have those services, and you say, well, we had the funding to do it, but we don't have it now. They're not going to want to have you say, well, we'll take it out of your property tax. That's not going to work. So I urge you to do what you need to do to follow the regulations and protect those programs. Thank you.
All right, that is the end of public comment. We have come to the constituent reports. First up is ASNC. And Annie, I understand this is your last report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and Chairman, and Dr. Sabaly. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Student Body and ASNC Student Government. I also would like to introduce a new ASNC president, since I'll be graduating Cyrus War, and he will be updating the board on the doings of the ASNC, and I will finish the report.
Congratulations on graduating.
First off, really quick, before I get into all my stuff, can we get a quick round of applause for Annie? I am really filling in some big shoes. She has done a fantastic job as president, so thank you very much. All right, so I've got a couple of ASNC updates. First off, we had our St. ASNC event. It went fantastically. We shared gifts with 43 children of employees and students, and they were super happy. We got a bunch of little cute pictures of them with Santa. It was adorable. We had bingo and dirt cart nights for the students. We had fantastic student turnout, so that was great. We, as ASNC, have been learning about toxic and dark leadership traits, so that's cool. We've also been working on academic best practices with the student government of University of Idaho, BSU, ISU, and LCSC. Our plans for the spring semester include improving campus community. I am currently fronting, I don't know, the work towards creating a better communication service across students. We're also working to improve class environment through adding art in the classrooms, so very cool. And our final thing is that we passed a resolution during one of our meetings. I'd like to invite up the rest of our ASNC members that have joined us at this meeting. It was something we did as a group, and so we just all wanted to be up here for when we read it. And
And here's the resolution. ASNC Student Government Resolution Regarding Representation of Stakeholders by Annie Vludowska, ASNC Student Government President, Sponsored by Talen Anderson, ASNC Student Government Vice President. Whereas the Associated Students of North Idaho College is a nonpartisan group that is involved in promoting student success and excellence in communication between students and other campus constituents. We will support every president who is committed to actively participate in the NIC community, listen to student voices, and strive for excellence, whereas we support following best practices by including all stakeholders, students, faculty, staff, and community in the search and selection process of the next president. We believe that the search process should begin as soon as possible so the new president can assume the office prior to the fall of 2022 semester. Therefore, as has occurred in previous searches, we strongly encourage that forums be conducted for all final candidates, that all stakeholders, especially students, have the opportunity to meet and provide feedback on the candidates. We also feel strongly that students should be represented on the upcoming presidential search committee and all search committees for key leadership position. And now we're open for questions or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. You know, in past searches, past presidential searches, we've absolutely honored ASNC's participation. In fact, it's vital. So my speculation would be that the Board would certainly reach out to ASNC leadership and have you identify someone in your constituency group to serve on the search committee. And I'm just very pleased that you want to do that. You absolutely should. We're here to serve you. So thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
And one else. Dr. Sabaly.
Annie, I'd just like to thank you for your service to NIC and wish you luck, and, you know, one of the things that Annie said to me the last time we talked is she hopes to someday be back here and teach at NIC, so I hope that maybe that happens, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Faculty Assembly, Molly.
Good evening, Chair, Board of Trustees, Dr. Sabaly, everyone, distinguished guests. Faculty Assembly report this month, it's all about love. Initially, first, I want to thank you Chair Banducci for visiting Faculty Assembly this month. I know it was difficult and kind of crazy times, but we so appreciated your time to speak with us and answer our questions, so thank you so much. Finally, Faculty Assembly passed a motion to voice gratitude toward the outgoing administrators at this week's board meeting. They gave me permission to craft these thank yous, and I hope that they represent the entire Assembly's sentiment. Greaton Stanley, you are so truly student-centered, and your infectious enthusiasm for North Idaho College will be missed. We appreciate all you've done for us, for your colleagues, and for the entire campus community. From your corny dad jokes to your thoughtfulness and inclusion, Faculty Assembly thanks you, and we wish you all the best for your next adventures. Chris Martin, oh, Chris Martin, during the storms of budgets, the chaos of audits, the gale-force winds of change, you, sir, have been our fearless fiduciary captain. No matter the season, you have been a steady, constant leader. Faculty Assembly appreciates your ingenuity, your creative and impeccable approaches to our finances, and the way you always supported every employee in every way possible. You will be missed by all, and we hope that your love and light shine on in better days ahead. I'm not sure if Dean Doyle found a seat tonight. Are you here, Kristi? Well, she'll see it on the Zoom. Kristi, you have been a shining force of collegiality, a beacon of stability, and a sunbeam of compassion for the thousands of students and faculty you have shepherded through this institution's hollowed halls. Your drive and commitment to your faculty and programs are both a testament to your work ethic and your love of community college. We wish for you continued successes and hope the best is yet to come. Lita, Dr. Burns, you have been the most inspired leader most of us have ever had the pleasure of working with. We will greatly miss your commitment to keeping us in the loop, pushing us to do better, and for helping us achieve our potential. You have always been a stickler for the details and kept a high bar, but you have done so with grace, compassion, and understanding. Of course, you're not replaceable. So we wish you a fond farewell with the bittersweetness. Enjoy your retirement, knowing that you've lifted us up, and we will preserve your legacy in our hearts and minds as we attempt to emulate the fine example you've been to all faculty. Thank you. I will stand for questions.
Yes, ma'am. Comments or questions for Molly?
Great on your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the Chaucer t-shirt.
I should say, yeah, fan of Chaucer. Thank you. Sarah Martin, Staff Assembly.
Good evening, Chair Banducci, other board members, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Sabaly, and our honored guest this evening. Staff met last week on December 9th. We invited Dr. Sabaly and Dr. Cassie Silva to join staff and introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about themselves, and share their goals and hopes and visions for their college and their new roles. We did solicit questions from staff ahead of the meeting for Dr. Sabaly and Dr. Silva to respond to and address some of those tough questions. They did a great job, and we thank you both for your attendance. We did celebrate our December Sterling Silver Award winner, and that was Jay Karkoff. Jay has consistently gone above and beyond and has adapted quickly and well to the stresses and changes that the COVID procedures have demanded of him. Jay is, he heads the Events Department for NIC. So congratulations, Jay.
Thank you.
We are in the process of gathering information for our We See You celebration, so unfortunately, I don't have anything to share at tonight's meeting, but that just means double the celebration next month. As reported last month, we did have an exploratory vote out to determine if staff were in favor of drafting a second resolution of no confidence. It was determined that we would be moving forward with drafting that second resolution. I will acknowledge the complexity of this issue, and will acknowledge that not all staff agree or feel the same on how things have transpired, the processes, and what's going on. I appreciate the staff on all sides who have felt comfortable enough to reach out and share their concerns, again, on all sides. I appreciate those concerns. I hear you and thank you. We did submit a draft resolution for staff to vote on. While there is a heightened urgency due to the unfolding events, Staff Assembly Executive Team felt that it was important to evaluate the process further and take an additional review of that resolution that was originally drafted. So we are going to take the results based on the vote that came on the initial draft resolution. We are going to do another read and review of that resolution, make any changes that might be necessary to make sure we are capturing all of the views and concerns of staff as a whole. And once we have that draft, we will then go through the process again of having it voted on, so hopefully by next meeting, we'll have something to present. If that transpires prior to the next meeting, we'll be sure to share that with the Board as it transpires. Chair Banducci, I know you express an interest on wanting to meet with staff, so I thank you for that offer, and I will be reaching out to you sometime in the next week or so to make sure we can connect and schedule time for you to come out and join staff and help answer some of those questions that we have as well. So early next year, we'll have you come out, and we look forward to it.
All right.
Okay, that wraps it up for tonight, so thank you. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Sarah?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Sarah, your message is, I just want you to know it's received, and there isn't anything more important to a Board is to have the confidence of the people that more important to a board is to have the confidence of the people that work here at NIC. So we will do everything we can to restore that confidence, and I certainly appreciate the conversations you've been having around it.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Woods. And if I could just comment further, I think, you know, with passing a resolution, just the talk of it in general, oftentimes you get this, like, a negative sense that's kind of tied and associated with it. It's an opportunity for us to really talk about what those issues are, bring it all out, being transparent. It's what we need to do to be able to build the trust, the trust that is missing. In order for us to move forward, we have to have that trust, so we have to bring those hard issues and hard discussions to the table, but it takes two sides. So staff are definitely willing to work with, I said it with the administration, with the board, but it also has to be reciprocated from the board as well.
Agreed. Thank you.
Are there any more comments or questions for Sarah? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The Senate, Jeff Carr.
Thank you, Chair Banducci, fellow trustees, President Sabaly, and President's Cabinet. I'm here to give an update on the Senate's November meeting. We did not have a meeting in December. We looked at Policy and Procedure 3.0217, which is employee benefits. This board had recommended some elements of the procedure get incorporated into the policy. We had a discussion about this, and the motion to amend failed to get a second in the Senate, so it was sent back to HR. Policy and Procedure 5.09 on communicable diseases was also discussed. We also decided to table both the policy and a new procedure. At the discussion, we determined that the language was just too inexact and confusing and sent it back to the alters. We had first reads for Policy 3.0205, the Employment of Related Parties, as well as Policy 3.0212, Professional Consulting Policy. Both of those went through their first read without much discussion. And I would like to personally thank Steve Kurtz for volunteering to be the Recording Secretary. It's been really interesting running the meeting and taking notes for it at the same time, and I'm glad I'm no longer responsible for having to do both of those. On November 19th, Dr. Sabaly had invited constituent leaders to meet with the Provost Candidate, Cassie Silva. I just wanted to share a little bit about that meeting and the questions I asked representing Senate and the responses given. I asked him first how President's Cabinet would characterize the switch to a provost model. He revealed that President's Cabinet enjoyed and liked Cassie and that the school really needed to plug some holes since we did have some, a number of senior leadership leave. I've had some conversation with President's Cabinet, and I know they have a lot of, at least the ones that speak to me, have some fears. They felt like they hadn't really talked about switching to a provost for very long, so even though they had discussed it, it wasn't necessarily a thing that they were necessarily all ready to go forward with. During the discussion, Dr. Sabaly mentioned that there were fears in the community that the board might, quote, "have an agenda," so I sort of followed up on that idea, and I asked him how it would look if we were to hire Cassie for an unannounced vacancy for this new position. He mentioned that the president did have the authority to make hiring positions for temporary positions, which is true, but I don't necessarily feel it alleviates the original concern. In fact, the Faculty Assembly represented decided not to attend the meeting just because of fears that it would somehow give the appearance that this was a decision that was made among all constituent groups, whereas we were there simply to meet her, and we didn't have any say in the final decision or things like that. Some rumor mills and people had discussed that there were concerns that Cassie might have been brought here to eliminate programs. She said that was not entirely on her docket. And I guess I'll personally say, I've worked with Cassie for many years on curriculum council and think she's a wonderful asset to North Idaho College. The only difficulties that she and Dr. Sabaly foresaw would be replacing instructors that might have lapped if they were running small programs and the challenges of might have filling those positions, but she said it was not on her agenda right now to eliminate any programs. I mainly phrase that in sort of a question at the audit at last meeting, presented at the last meeting, sort of asking if she agreed with the findings that school was in good financial shape. That will conclude the Senate's report. I will answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Jeff or comments? Jeff, I don't see any. Thank you. Next up is the President's Report. Dr. Sabaly.
Chair Banducci, trustees, guests. One of the best pieces of advice that I've received thus far in my new role is that if people can't and don't get over their anger, the college will be in trouble and unable to move forward. I understand emotions are high right now and that anger is present in a lot of us. Anger is one of the primary human emotions. Fear and sadness often drive that. The interrelational conflict between our board members does not diminish the great work that our faculty and staff are doing every single day. North Idaho College is fulfilling its mission every single day because of the tremendous work that our faculty and staff are doing. The reality is strife at the board level is creating uneasiness, sadness, and fear amongst the college community. The concern is, it shouldn't be like this. And how long can the good people that we have working here sustain their work under these conditions? This board must collectively and as individual members, display and bolster a culture of one NIC tonight and moving forward. Many of you may not know, my bachelor's and master's are in history. My teaching experiences are something that I hold fondly, and understanding insights about the past have important implications for the present and the future. I encourage our board, our employees, and our NIC community at large to look at our past, to understand and value the history of NIC. And while we honor our past, let's have an opportunity to look forward to our future, where we gain a knowledge of understanding of one another, where we acknowledge different perspectives, and where we look for areas of commonality where we can start our work together. There are many difficult discussions that are before the board tonight. Frankly, these are difficult times, and nobody is going to get everything they want. The NIC community is hurt and fearful right now. Arguing the merits of that is dismissive of the real feelings that many are having. I want to take an opportunity tonight to thank Lita Burns, Graydon Stanley, Chris Martin, and Kristi Doyle. Thank you for your years of service to North Idaho College. I wish you all the luck in your new opportunities and the new chapters of your lives. And I just wanted to make sure I gave you one final nod of gratitude in your last board meeting, so thank you. I'm also thankful and excited as we look forward to 2022. I'm so thankful that Dr. Cassie Silva and Sarah Garcia, two known NIC leaders, have decided to step up in these times to provide support and leadership. Cassie in the role of interim provost and Sarah as our interim VP of Business and Operations. Leaders step forward not only, not out in times of crisis, and I look forward to welcoming you both to sit at this head table in front of me next month. You both have new ideas you bring to the table, as well as the ability to continue to support the great initiatives that our current leadership has already put underway. You both have been incredibly supportive of NIC for years, and I know that you will continue to give your all in service to our students, our faculty, our staff, our Board of Trustees, and our community. NIC has been here for 88 years, and I'm committed to building a team that ensures that North Idaho College is a leader in innovation with strong financial footing and a can-do mindset to the needs of this community for the foreseeable future. I was really impressed this past weekend with the holiday concert that Max Mendez and Brian Haniford put on. This was a free holiday concert to the public, and it was the first concert with no capacity limits on NIC's campus since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. To me, this is an important step forward. It's a great outreach to our community, and while we still have concerns about the pandemic, it was a step forward. It was an opportunity to start coming back together. I was honored to attend the Basic Patrol Academy graduation last Thursday with Trustee Wood. I was pleased to see Chair Banducci at last week's NIC Booster Club meeting and appreciate the opportunity he took to personally address Faculty Assembly last week. Chair Banducci and Trustee McKenzie both showed up at the recent legislative standoff and had the opportunity to visit with many of our key legislators from all five northern counties of Idaho as we get ready for the upcoming legislative session. Trustee Howard attended an event today for the celebration of grants that I will talk about in a little bit, but in the spirit of one NIC, these are important steps forward, seeing our board members back on campus and engaged in attending NIC events. Accreditation protects all of our loves and interests. We need to set emotions aside and forge forward. I've visited one-on-one with each of our five board members. My interactions have been positive experiences, and I want the college community and the community to hear that. I believe in my time as interim president, the communications with each of the board members as a whole has shown to me a commitment to remove the perceptions that there is a board-versus-college sentiment. We now need to remove the perception and the reality of a fragmented board. As individual trustees and as a collective group, I believe you all have been supportive of me and respectful of my interim role. This college community needs you to show a level of decorum and respect to each other as well. I appreciate your willingness to have an open dialogue about current issues in front of the public. I'm grateful for the return of public comment and look forward to hearing, moving forward, more from our community. I understand, too, the great strain board members have personally endured as well. But truthfully, this is not just about interpersonal relationships amongst our board members anymore. The discussions by this board and how the board conducts itself is being watched, and not just watched, scrutinized. The actions and reactions are affecting students, faculty, staff, donors, and the community as a whole. I am not just talking about accreditation, I am talking about livelihoods and decisions impacting where students choose to attend college. The discussions and decisions you make as a collective board must be honored by all to provide evidence of strong functional governance. I'm committed to working with you, and we need to listen to opposing views. We need to focus on issues, not personalities. We need to avoid questioning motives, and we need to be polite. And lastly, we need to accept the decisions of the board as a whole and speak in one voice after decisions are made. NIC has a longstanding process and protocol that college communications go through the president, his designee, and the board chair. In the past month, I have seen faculty and staff continue to do the things that make North Idaho a great and unique place. I want to thank the foundation for their support for events like Night at the Library, where food, tutors, writing supports were provided for our students. To our donors, Night at the Library is one tangible example of how your contributions make a difference to our students, and it brought me so much joy to see so many students in the library the other day. It's clear to me that our students are pleased with the return to more face-to-face opportunities. George McAllister, I'm proud of the work the library team does, and especially watching you all in action that night. We had over 150 students attend that library that night. They had 158. They were being served, and they were being cared for. The library team collaborated with ASNC, Cardinal Learning Commons, Information Technology, the Math Education Center, and the Writing Center. Tomorrow night, I look forward for one of the best events on campus, the nursing pinning ceremony, and it's great that we get to honor these students in person. The steps we are taking forward are important for us to remain relevant as this community's college. I look forward to continuing to step forward in a new year with all of you. I will touch on the NWCCU visit later this evening, as it is an agenda item, but there was one aspect of accreditation that I wanted to include in my message here. Credits. I know it's been confusing, but I want to make it as absolutely clear as I can right now that the recent coverage of information released by the State Board of Ed has caused confusion, but they did clarify it tonight or today in their State Board of Ed meeting. Your credits earned here are good. They will be good in the spring. They will be good as long as we're going through this process. NIC's accreditation is solid today. Any previous and current credits, certifications, degrees are protected under NIC's accreditation. Anyone concerned about taking courses and receiving credit, including dual credit, for the spring semester, your credits will be transferable, and again, NIC's accreditation is solid. On Tuesday night, Dr. Burns, myself, Dr. Kurtz, and Dr. Silva are going to have a town hall starting at 5:00 to answer some of those questions, and Steve Smith will be moderating that. It'll be on Zoom, so if people have even more additional questions, we will give you that opportunity. If in the future there is any change to NIC's accreditation status, it is not retroactive nor punitive to the credits already received and degrees conferred. Trustee residency, I'll touch briefly on this topic as well as it is on the agenda. I met with Matt Freeman, Executive Director of the State Board of Ed, last week, and NIC's Chief Communication and Government Relations Officer, Laurel, was also in on that meeting. We covered many topics, one of those being his interpretation on residency for community college trustees in Idaho. While this specific statute is silent, he shared that his team was working on an answer that the statute specifically speaks to the residency when the trustee is elected. Since then, his office has conferred with the AG's office, and Mark Lyons will share more in detail tonight. The information we have received is there is no clear answer, so I am going to defer to Mark Lyons later on this evening to hear more about that. But one final acknowledgement, thank you for the NIC Foundation for the grant program again this year. Including today's award, the NIC Foundation has made 1.4, sorry, 1.48 million available since 1994 and has funded 361 total grants to staff and faculty through the grant program, which is designed to foster innovation and educational excellence at NIC. Many thanks to the NIC employees for going the extra mile to submit grant applications for this semester. And I want to wish our students luck as they head home and to other activities, as tomorrow is the last day of the semester and the last day of finals. So thank you, and I'll stand for questions.
Questions or comments for Dr. Sabaly, please?
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Dr. Sabaly, that was quite the report. You know, you certainly should always feel free to speak your mind. I will say, I've never quite heard any, a report like that. You've categorized or characterized disagreements over policy, disagreements over state and federal law, disagreements over following accreditation standards as set aside your anger and set your emotions aside, get over your anger. That's an interesting perception. So since we're on the topic of board governance, I have some questions to ask you, because there seems to be some confusion on your part is how an item is placed on a board agenda and whether or not the board agenda and packet will be provided to the full board instead of waiting for an approval process by the board chair. Policy doesn't dictate this process, and so I want to know your understanding of the process.
Well, Trustee Wood, I talked to Mary that week, and Mary forwarded me the summary and steps of what the board retreat in June, and that there was an agreement at that time amongst trustee members that there would be a creation of a list of agenda items and that the president and the board chair would do them together. That was the understanding of what you guys came to as an agreement from Mary at your board retreat in June.
There was never an agreement that the board chair would be the deciding person on whether something would be on the agenda or it would be shared with the full board. That's inaccurate.
Let me share the exact words that came from them that ran the meeting that specifically addressed that, because it was a topic of conversation, and she said that these were areas that were, that there was a consensus. It says included, there will be a running list of these topics, proposed agenda topics for consideration at future board meetings. There'll be a running list of these topics until addressed. The chair and president will discuss appropriate timing for inclusion in future agendas. The chair and president will discuss appropriate timing for inclusion in future agendas. Board members should receive the board pack in sufficient time in advance to review the, properly review the meeting. Communication with the president, any questions arising from the package should be asked prior to the meeting. Basically, the no surprises rule. The president should work out a communication plan with each member to address questions and concerns prior to the meeting." And right under, on top of that, she says, this is titled, "Section C, Communication and Information Sharing Protocols", and she said, "The following items seem to have consensus." And this is from the trainers of ACCT who conducted our full Saturday board training that day and memorialized the things that were agreed to and that we came to as part of that meeting. And it's right here in the notes, as provided by Mary and Ken.
Mr. Chair.
And I will remind you, one last thing. You and Ken shared the chairmanship for the first seven years of my time on the board. And your policy as board chair, and I'll remind you of this, was that for a board member to put an agenda on the, an item on the agenda had to be agreed to by three trustees. That was your requirement. Three trustees agree and the item would go on the agenda. I have not tried to have something nearly as strict as that. I've been open. We've put things on the agenda. I was basically isolated from agenda items for the first eight years of my time on this board. So if that was arbitrary on your part, we all went with...
So that is not true. That is your narrative.
But it was true.
Chair Banducci.
No, I will finish. Thank you. It is not true. What happened is we did have a handshake agreement that we would have three trustees decide if they wanted something on an agenda. Policy does not dictate that. So perhaps we should have went back and reviewed policy, and we did not, but policy doesn't dictate that. As far as an agreement with an ACCT trainer, we made a lot of agreements in that meeting. We also agreed to come out of the meeting and support the president, and that didn't occur. This agreement that you want to refer back to does not supersede policy. So what I need to know from Dr. Sabali, does he understand that you do not have final say over an agenda item, nor do we wait for you to sign off on it before the board can have the agenda?
May I be addressed?
Trustee McKenzie.
Trustee Wood, if you would like to collaborate on a policy that explicitly details how board agenda items are generated, that to me would be showing good improvement on board governance, which is directly related to our accreditation. So while we all had handshake agreements that we were consensus on, on how agendas were going to be generated from the ACCT training which we followed, if you want something different, I invite you to collaborate with me to propose something for this next board.
Dr. Sabali.
I also want to clarify that every agenda item that any trustee asks to be on the agenda this month is on the agenda.
That is correct.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
You know, I can't help but recall my time as a lawyer in dealing with rules. And every time somebody had a disagreement, they wanted to pass a new rule. In all due respect, I don't think we need any new rules. We need to know how to get along together. And we need to do that by having the president not hold up anything from any trustee with regard to an item on the agenda. I mean, he can get on the agenda and there's no motion and there's no, or there's no second, and it goes away. But that doesn't, nobody should be prohibited from getting something put on the agenda. And the summary that you just read, Mr. Chairman, from the ACCT people indicated that the president was obligated to get with all of the trustees beforehand to make sure there weren't going to be problems. All we need to do is communicate. All we need to do is make sure that when a trustee has something they want on the agenda, we don't need a rule for this, that they get it on the agenda. And we handle it as a group out here in public the way I think it was intended to be. Nobody should be restricted from getting anybody, anything on the agenda. And as you recall, I never restricted anybody when I was chair from anybody ever putting anything on the agenda. I invited every trustee to have open access to putting things on the agenda. That's my belief then, that's my belief now.
I would agree, sir, and I think Mr. Lyons has been recommending to us to have those communications and to pick up the phone and call each other as appropriate. I think he's been telling us that for a year, not write unnecessary emails. He'd rather us talk and work it out and communicate.
Mr. Chair, further discussion?
Trustee Wood.
I think the issue is that talking to Dr. Sabali, I would ask for the agenda and he would respond about what was on the agenda, and it's there for now. Does not know, he did not know if you would individually choose to remove it. That's my objection. I think he was trying to do his best. I firmly believe that. But he's under the impression, I think, that he works directly for you when in fact, we're a five-member board of trustees. So I just want to clarify that tonight, that this is not your role as chair. It's a board agenda.
I'm going to say one thing that Dr. Sabali, I think, has a comment. There was particular challenge in this last cycle to try to get this agenda put together. It was a very dynamic and fluid time, and we weren't sure what was going to be on the agenda. We were sifting through just the head start issue, which, again, some of the folks that spoke would understand that better after we actually get to talk to it because they'd have more information to understand the situation. There was a lot that we weren't sure what was going to be on the agenda, what we were going to need to deal with. So there was some challenges to the assembly of the agenda. Dr. Sabali.
I will honor policy. We will continue to honor policy here at NIC. And if there's some confusion on what was agreed on in June, I will move forward with that understanding. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Sabali regarding his report? Next on the agenda is the Foundation Lausanne Report. Trustee McKenzie.
So people can hear me. Currently ongoing is the really big raffle tickets for sale. And normally, they've sold 600 by now, and they've sold 800 already. So get them right away. It's the 29th year and they're going fast. So the raffle exists. It pays for the learning laboratory in the construction at Parker. So also, NIC Foundation board members have received a notable feedback of people having communicated they're either postponing or halting their donations to the foundation. The board itself has received at least one email expressing similar concerns. And gratefully, those donors in that same email decided to focus on the students and the NIC community, who are the ones whom the NIC Foundation benefits. So I would just like to add, no one should be judged for giving or not giving. But encourage, I want to encourage everyone to focus on the students and the NIC community, and that is who benefits from the donations to the NIC Foundation. Specifically, for an example that Dr. Sabali, President Sabali, has already addressed is long ago, the Foundation dedicated funding specific to support a Night at the Library. And the most recent Night at the Library was massively successful. So I believe if donors attended a Night at the Library and saw the good works that's going on that the Foundation does, hesitation to donate to the NIC Foundation would obliterate from the exposure to the amazing things the NIC Foundation funds enable and directly contribute to NIC. Take a tour of the library and you'll see it's a great place to meet. A public thank you to the NIC Foundation board members, from myself, for their sizable dedication to the NIC Foundation mission. My first year getting to know them and getting exposed, I've been meeting people who have dedicated decades of service that most never even heard of. Before I got to be a trustee, I was unaware. And they do a lot of work and a lot of good benefit comes from their work. So your work is important and crucial to the mission of North Idaho College, and thank you.
Any comments or questions for Trustee McKenzie regarding his foundation report? Trustee Howard.
Trustee McKenzie, you indicated that there was some reductions in donations. What's the extent of the reduction in pledges and donations so far related to the conduct of this board?
You know, it's really hard because I don't directly engage with the donors. I do know some of the Foundation board members have directly related it to board members and associations. I also know there's been student protests going on, you know, this past year. So like I said, I don't judge people for donating or not donating. Everyone has specific reasons. But I would say some of them have contributed to board members. And so how many? Can I say for you?
My understanding is that the report, the last foundation, was that close to $5 million in donations and pledges have been withdrawn as a result of the conduct of this board. Is that the same number that you've been given?
No. I don't recall the number exactly. I can report a month from now and get you that exact number. I know one donation specifically, I think it was a couple million specifically. I'll ask for some port from Dr. Sabali.
I would like to stick with Steve Masterson's statement on this. "Information related to donors and their support is projected and will not be released. The NIC Foundation is committed to continuing to provide scholarship support and program enrichment for our students."
Well, you can stick with that, but I got to tell you, I was told it was close to $5 million. And I just think the public needs to know, and we need to know as a board, quite frankly, how we're affecting the Foundation. I was also told that donations are down this year dramatically from where they have been in the past. We need to be aware of that. That's not something that should be a secret because we need to work toward getting it back on track, getting those donations back in the hands of the Foundation where they can do the good that they've done in the past. This shouldn't, the concept that we've, that the Foundation is losing donors and losing money is not something that should be generalized and minimized. We need to know about it. We need to be concerned about it.
I would say generally, the end of the year, we are, is when a lot of people do end-of-year donations, and we are behind this year.
Yeah, and that's all I want from you is just a nice candid report on what the Foundation has reported. And again, we don't want to get into individual donated donors.
I took notes directly during the meeting.
But I think the general relationship between us demands honesty and openness so that we can understand how each other's working. Thank you.
There was an insinuation there that maybe he wasn't being honest or candid. I don't think he said anything. He just said they're down, and he talked to you, he didn't give specific numbers because he doesn't appear to have them. Next item is under unfinished business. It's an action item. Title of the action is Adopt Robert's Rules of Order for Board Meetings. And the point of contact for that is Trustee Barnes. Trustee Barnes.
Thank you. Trustee Banducci, I move to formally adopt Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised as the governing rules for running NIC board meetings effective immediately. I will repeat that motion if it's necessary.
Do you need that repeated? What's that? Do you have it recorded? No, Michael, I think good. Thank you, Duell. I have a second on that motion.
We have a second to open discussion, but a point of order. It seems like there's two lines for Tab 1 in this action that we're on, on the agenda. Could someone clarify the difference between the two?
One is the actual adoption of the Robert's Rules of Orders, and the second is the policy that will govern it.
Two different documents. So I second the open discussion.
Okay. Trustee Barnes, it's your motion. You have the floor, sir.
The past year of NIC board meetings has demonstrated precisely why Robert's rules were developed and why they are so critical to us now in this setting. As I study the official 12th edition, I am constantly remembering instances where the NIC board would have been more effective, productive, and courteous had they wholeheartedly embraced and enforced these rules. I was appalled to have learned that the NIC board from many years ago decided to discard it and only consider it as an optional reference rather than a rule. The primary objective of Robert's Rules of Order is to ensure that minority voices are heard and have equal input into board matters. Removing Robert's Rules of Order effectively silenced the minority voice for longer than a decade now. The newly elected board has clearly changed the makeup of the NIC board. And as a result of not having clear rules, there has been mayhem and discourteous behavior on the parts of all members, myself included. The absence of rules creates an atmosphere that allows anger and tensions to get the better of us, and chaos ensues. We, as a full board, need to acknowledge our corporate responsibilities for letting our meetings get out of hand, resulting in myriad media articles reporting on chaos at the NIC board meetings. I hope and pray that we have a unanimous vote in favor of this motion. Anything less will not look like a board that desires the very best for NIC, but will show that lack of rules is acceptable. And lack of rules is not acceptable to this trustee. Adoption of this motion will necessitate updates to the current policy and will also require the development of specific procedures that address how to incorporate technologies and unique established existing processes for NIC. Provided this motion passes, the next agenda item is to update and accept appropriate language for the pertinent policy and make it effective immediately. As a continuing note, it was mentioned during a public comment about organizations our size. As I read the entirety of the official Robert's Rules of Order, I was particularly interested in this particular dynamic. And Robert's Rules of Order has been updated and perfected and tweaked in a way to address all situations. Granted, smaller organizations can get along with a lot fewer and a subset of rules. We have a unique situation here, though. And having an established, proven rules of order will benefit all of us if we have the time to have a personal workshop, to go through it, to address those issues where we might have to have specific standing orders that deviate from the written rule of order. So I appreciate the public comment regarding that. And those were specifically issues that I agree with, that we have a small organization and we can get away with a smaller subset, but we need to have a standard that we can all agree on, and that has been proven over time. Done.
Thank you, Trustee Barnes. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this motion?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. I can understand Trustee Barnes' desire for order. I understand why he's trying to do what he's doing. But I have to agree with Councilman Gookin. We serve on a similar body together. And we follow Robert's rules as a guideline. Most local boards do, and county commissioners use it as a guideline. But we don't follow it exclusively. I do agree with him that it's not meant for a small, five-member body. I think it's meant for larger bodies such as Congress. I will just say, we might not be very pretty sometimes, but we do work our way through it. And I am concerned that adopting strict rules will actually inhibit our conversations that we need to have instead of bringing order. I think we'll end up spending a lot of time on parliamentary procedure, challenging motions, likely disagreeing over the rules. We would need to hire a professional parliamentarian because I wouldn't agree to a volunteer... We would need to hire a professional parliamentarian because I wouldn't agree to a volunteer person with either political party. I just don't think adopting the strict guidelines of Robert Rules would be productive for us. Now, Mr. Lyon did provide a good outline for how to conduct our board meetings. We've, I've been on this board 17 years, we've done just fine with that. I just, I can appreciate his efforts to clear up some motions, how sometimes we muck our way through it, but I don't think that the governance issues we're dealing with are going to be, have, really have anything to do with parliamentarian rules.
I guess I want to address, I should do it through the chair, but I want to address Trustee Barnes directly and say thank you. Quite frankly, I agree with your sentiment completely. I think that sometimes you need a rule in order to have a foundation for putting things in order. But we have those rules now. And as much as I support the intent and the purpose of your moving to adopt these formal rules, I find it difficult because I think it will form the basis for just a lot of disagreement. We have adopted in our policy the concept of following these rules in principle. That doesn't mean, that means that we can use the rules in whatever way we want to in order to try and help control meetings if they're getting out of order. The chair has the role of imposing limitations if the people who are making comments are getting out of order, and the members of the trustee board have the ability to raise motions that are identified under Robert's Rules of Order in order to try and bring order to anything that is moving out of control. I don't know if that's going to work, quite frankly, because it hasn't worked in the last year. It did work, quite frankly, in the years prior to that. And I can tell you from talking to trustees who were on this panel when the rule was changed, it was because the Robert's Rules of Order became a focus of disagreement. I mean, there was a lot of debate about what Robert's Rules of Order said or how they should be applied, and so they moved to a more informal use of it to get away from the argument over the rule itself and to utilize the concept of, okay, let's use the concept of these rules in order to try and maintain order. Even the preamble of the book that was so graciously provided to each of us, they go through the different group sizes, and they're talking about if a half dozen people, maybe that'll work. But when the gathering reaches a size of about 12 to 15 persons, a threshold is crossed. At that point, the meeting becomes full scale. In order to preserve its freedom to act, the body must impose regulation. Before that, they were suggesting that the regulation be not strict, but it'd be general in order to try and accommodate the process going on. Again, I applaud your attempt to try and get some order to some things that have not been in order. I'm just not sure that this is the solution.
Chairman Banducci. Trustee Barnes.
Absence of rules has been the bane of this board for the year that I've been on it. It is a large rule, but it does not mean that everything has to be followed. There's templates we've been provided with that I extracted out of the latest revision that provides a tool for us to use in order to keep a meeting moving. Our meetings have gone on painfully long because we do not have a rule and a process for dealing with debate. One of the specific issues, Chairman Banducci, is the act of many trustees of addressing other trustees directly and personally. One of the rules of order is to always address the chair, regardless of who he is, and only refer to other members by their position and not by name, devoid of any personal attacks. This keeps the tempers in check, and that's why I'm saying the established rules of order provide the guidelines for following that, but they have to be followed. It can't be a suggested guideline if we feel like it. Without establishing a rule as a rule, we have no rules. We have disorder and chaos.
Trustee McKenzie.
The only correction I'd offer to the prior discussion is the absence of written-down rules have been the bane of the board since we've been on it. Because I feel like at this ACCT training we went to, we formulated a rule for board agenda preparation, and yet now that's under debate. So, unless it's written down, then the rules have not been agreed upon, it seems. And, hold on, I skipped a bit. I, so, saying that, I support getting things written down, and that is what I think this is doing. Having it be a guideline leaves it to either disenfranchised party, then gets to criticize the chair's discretionary decision, and I believe it would contribute to order on this board.
I think I will make a comment also. I think sometimes a self-imposed discipline is a good thing, and it would impose that on all of us equally. And I would also suggest that if somehow down the road we find, if we do adopt this, that it'd be too unwieldy or is not addressing the issues that we had hoped it would, we can always revert back to where we are now. But I'm inclined to think that, for the good of all of us and for civility, as Trustee Barnes indicated, and the way even just how we'll be, I don't want to say forced, but the way we're supposed to address each other under the adopted rules, I think that will all be, would all be very helpful. So, I see it as a positive thing.
Mr. Chair.
If it's not, we can always reverse course down the road.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
I, as I indicated before, I truly believe we need more order in our meetings. I think we have the structure to do that. But I would, I would vote to adopt the Robert's Rules of Order, quite honestly, if I had a sense that they were going to be enforced in the way that they should be. But quite honestly, we have members of this panel that break into other people's discussions without being recognized, whether it's the chair or whether it's other members of the board. And sometimes just open discussion is something that we need to do. But I'm afraid that these rules are going to become the argument over which we spend time and interfere with our transaction of the business that we're here to do. But quite honestly, I want to see us have more, more control over the meetings. And so, if the inclination of this panel is that they want to adopt them, I'm going to vote for it. But I'm going to insist that they be enforced then. I am going to insist upon it, including the chair, in terms of the discussions. I think that's, that's the understanding under which we're engaging in this process, and I think we ought to enforce it.
Appreciate your comments. As you're aware, there are times where we'll be able to hold each other accountable with points of order. The other thing is that hopefully there'll be a collegialness as we work through learning and understanding this, and I would suggest that we'll probably end up needing to schedule some sort of a training after the first year to help us all get more educated on Robert's Rules of Orders. We have the book, we have some sheets, and I think we will, I would hope we would all make a good faith effort to do our best with that.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee, what?
I, again, I'm not going to support it just because I'm concerned that we'll spend a lot of time on, you know, back and forth on who had what motion. But I, it sounds like all of you are ready to approve it. And one of the things that Trustee Barnes said was make this effective immediately, that would mean as we move into our next agenda item, we're all going to have to be very sharp on Robert's Rules of Order. We have not had a workshop. I would just request, Trustee Barnes, maybe you would amend that motion, that we would adopt them formally if it goes forward, and you all vote for that, at the January meeting when we would, we would first utilize them. Because we really do need to spend some time in a workshop and spend some time reading the handbook.
Trustee Banducci.
Trustee Barnes.
I'm willing to compromise on the wording of the motion to remove the words "effective immediately."
Do you, in your amended, in your amended motion, do you have a specific wording that you would like that establishes that we will start to use it post this meeting or something like that? I mean, we're already attempting to use Robert's Rules of Orders mostly here.
Chair Banducci.
Yes, Trustee McKenzie.
While other trustees weigh, amending their motion, if I may. Robert's Rules of Orders has been a guideline for this board forever. People should be familiar with how the Robert Rules of, or, Robert's Rules of Order operates, especially, so, I see no reason why not. It can go into effect immediately and start contributing to order at this board.
Mr. Chair, I will second Trustee Barnes' motion.
I'm not sure what his motion is.
Chair Banducci, I will further amend.
Trustee Barnes, if you would, please.
Move to formally adopt Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised as the governing rules for running NIC board meetings effective January, at the next January meeting.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Trustee Barnes, not to get overly formal, but did I hear you withdraw your initial motion?
I amended it, sir.
Amended it? Thank you. Just want to make sure it's clear. So, we have an amendment to the motion. I have a second. You would have first honor.
The vote is on the amendment.
Okay. The vote is on the amendment. Do you have anything to say, sir, since it's your amendment?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Trustee McKenzie, Trustee Howard?
No.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the amended motion, we'll vote on this first, and then we'd go back and vote on the original motion.
On the amended motion.
No, no.
On the full amended motion.
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, we go back and vote on the original, since we've amended.
On the amended motion.
Amended motion, thank you. Again, we're working through this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Point of order, please, repeat the entire motion as amended.
I do not have that written down, sir.
I will help. Move to formally adopt Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised as the governing rules for running NIC board meetings effective January.
The January board meeting.
The January board meeting, effective at the next January board meeting.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your aye?
Nay.
All right. Sorry, all those.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those opposed?
This is my point. Nay.
All right. The motion carries, and the amended motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is an action item. It's Select Presidential Search Firm.
Point of order, sir.
Yes, sir. Trustee Barnes.
The agenda is to address the policy.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, wow. I jumped right over it. You are correct. Excuse me. Second item under unfinished business is Tab 1. It's the second reading action item, Revised Meetings Policy 2.01.03. Trustee Barnes, you are the point of contact. Pardon me.
Trustee Banducci, I move that we modify the language in the policy cited to remove the phrase, "Under Rules of Order, all meetings of the Board of Trustees will be conducted in the manner prescribed by the Idaho Code. However, should an issue concerning parliamentary procedure arise that is not addressed in Idaho Code, Robert's Rules of Order may be used as a guideline." Strike that entire sentence, replace with the following sentence. "The rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised shall govern the NIC Board of Trustees in all cases to which they are applicable and in which they are not inconsistent with board policies and any special rules of order the board may adopt. Further, the final line will be stricken. It is expected that all attendees at the meetings will observe the commonly accepted rules of civility to provide orderly and respectful interaction in public settings."
Now, we'll point out that everybody should have that in their board book under Tab 1. And to note what Trustee Barnes is referencing, you should go to the last page, and you will see the red lines and the strikeouts and the new language that has been included. Everybody has that? Do I have a second on Trustee Barnes' motion?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Barnes, it's your motion. You have the floor first, sir.
Just for everybody's information, this wording was taken directly from the suggested in-brief book that you have before you and is consistent with recommendations for policies for organizations. I believe that the language in there allows for us as an organization to discuss specific areas where we need to have unique and special standing rules of order that are either silent or contrary to Robert's Rules. It fully permits that and expects that that is often, that is often going to be the case, particularly in very small boards.
All right, thank you. Other, Trustee Howard.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'd like an explanation of why the language that says that the meetings conducted in the manner prescribed by the Idaho Code was removed. I would think that if the Idaho Code prescribed something, we really should abide by it, and it should be primary. So, I'm wondering why that was taken out.
May I respond?
You can respond better than I can. Trustee Barnes.
Trustee Howard addressed a question that I also had in reviewing that, and I specifically was looking into the Idaho Code to find any specific prescribed manners of rules for governing, and I did not find any. It doesn't mean they're not there. I did not find any. That's the reason for striking it.
I guess, Mr. Chair, my concern is.
Mr. Howard.
If they're not there now, they might be there someday, and it's, it's one of those provisos that I think would be a safe proviso that gives us an exception in terms of if we find something in the Idaho Code.
May I respond again?
May I ask a question first, sir? To Trustee Howard's question, my limited understanding of Robert's Rules of Orders is that there are some built-in provisos inside there that talks about higher authority and other things that may supersede the Robert's Rules of Orders regulatory or statutorily or those sorts of things.
That's correct.
Trustee Barnes, would you?
Yes, the specific, I don't have the, actually, the actual wording within the official Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised Version 12, but it does explicitly state that Robert's Rules of Order is subordinate to state, local governments' guidelines or rules or laws.
So, that would, I think I'm understanding. So that would, I think I'm understanding you, trustee Barnes, that would make that sentence superfluous and so unnecessary.
And that was my opinion as well, that it was a superfluous statement.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
For this to be adopted into policy, a couple of things. We haven't discussed a parliamentarian, which would be necessary. We would have to have that, and that's going to be an expense we should talk about, an expense for this budget cycle we're in. And we are going to need that person by January. We haven't discussed that at all. The other thing is, I was handed this book about a week and a half ago, I think, and told that the three of you were going to be adopting Robert's Rules at the next meeting, so here you go. So that's kind of a problem. There's discussion going on outside of board meetings, and it's determined by the purchase of these books that we're adopting Robert's Rules of Order. So I don't know that the Rules of Order are going to stop that. I will just tell you that that was a major concern when I heard that. You've all had the discussions and you're changing the policy. So we do need to talk about the parliamentarian. Maybe trustee Barnes has some thoughts on that.
May I respond, Chair?
I'd like to respond first. I'd like to clarify, and I'm going to do this respectfully. Comments were a little disingenuous. Last month, tab seven was the first reading action of revised policy 2.01.03, identical to what you see today. So it was in your board book for November for review and discussion, and we discussed it at length, went over, talked about it. Everybody was given the opportunity and encouraged, if there was any inputs on this policy, to please provide them to trustee Barnes prior to this meeting. And my understanding is that none of the other four trustees provided any input on the policy, so the policy stands as it was presented initially in November. So we've all had well over a month to see this policy as it sits right now unchanged. So I think that's adequate time. I don't think anything was being hidden in plain sight there. And it was a first reading action. This is a second reading action, normal to our process. And it's been fully vetted, and again, everybody had the opportunity to speak to it and to provide input specifically. Trustee Barnes, if you would, please.
Chairman Banducci, I think you addressed my response.
Mr. Chair, my concern was not with.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. My concern was not with the written, what's written and prepared before us. My statement was, I was told we're adopting it, that you had all decided we're adopting it and changing policy. So that is a concern.
I don't know who told you that, trustee Wood.
Okay. Anyway, we need to have some discussion about the parliamentarian. And I don't know if you want to do that in January? Looks like you're ready to adopt this policy.
Chairman Banducci.
Trustee Barnes.
There is nothing stated within Robert's Rules of Order that requires a parliamentarian to officiate, if you will, a board meeting. It's simply anybody, it doesn't even have to be an official parliamentarian, anybody who is familiar enough with the Rules of Order to facilitate the acting chair, whether that's the official chairman or an appointed person by the chair. The chairman has the prerogative to delegate running a meeting as chairman. And also, the chairman has the prerogative to appoint either an official parliamentarian or somebody who's very familiar with parliamentary law to assist in quickly and rapidly identify what is the proper next steps so as to avoid problems that may have been experienced in the past on arguing over what is appropriate rule of order or not. So that would be my statement on that.
What I would suggest at this point is a two-pronged approach. One is, I believe trustee Barnes has been researching the availability of parliamentarians in the local area. I think there are some folks that can do it on a voluntary basis if they chose, or some professionals, or some to be hired. Maybe he could compile a list or some options. We'd certainly not want someone that wasn't acceptable and amenable to all the members of the board. If it's a volunteer, it could be some nominal monetary stipend as a gesture. Those are a couple of thoughts. I also know that Mr. Lyons has indicated that he would be willing to review and bone up a little bit and continue to assist all of us, and certainly me as chair, as we move forward, working with Robert's Rules of Order, since that's been our guiding framework all along anyway, that we would do our best to get through it. Your statement.
Would you like me to comment?
Do I?
I'm not sure, because I'm overwhelmed with irony here. I think I've consistently expressed my concern that we are, if we adopt them strictly, it's going to create a procedural complication and additional discord. But having said that, having it adopted, I will do my best.
Thank you, sir. And quite frankly, that's all I can hope for, as I hope that's all you can hope for me, I'm going to do my best. So everybody show some grace.
If I may, Chair.
You getting late? Anybody else? Trustee McKenzie. Hey, we got to laugh once in a while, it's just long nights.
I challenge anyone out there, but I'm confident at a previous board meeting, everyone at this table agreed, no matter what, even without the Robert's Rules of Order as just guidelines or enforceable as rules, that everyone would be brushing up on our Robert's Rules of Order skills. So I believe even Mark Lyons, you even said, agreed that as well. And that, from my understanding, is that's why Shannon provided us these books for us to read.
And then educational opportunities, we do try to run, to help me run a tighter meeting for all of us, better meetings, better decorum.
I know, I believe expressed an interest in reading, so. I even went to the library and I had to return it after my time, so. Thank you for the books, for the proactive movement. Thank you, Shannon.
At this time, unless there's further comment or questions, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor of approving the motion and accepting revised meetings policy 2.01.03, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And the motion carries. Revised meetings policy 2.01.03 is accepted.
Chair.
Next item is action, select presidential search firm, and trustee McKenzie.
Forgive me, that's public speaking on one-on-one. Here, I'll start over. In the midst, we have a lot of VP turnovers with several other positions to be filled. One just announced just yesterday, so. I think it's best that we need to let the college stabilize and get in a good, just positive, healthy rhythm. Two search firms, RHPA and AGB, they're two highly respected national firms. They're unable to work with us at this time, just, or won't work with us. I don't know the reasons exactly. So we had to work hard just to even get the five options we got with one of those being at the last minute. So RPA, one of the search firms, has even withdrawn from their offering. The Poly Group, this is important, who, NIC's already, we're using them for three other searches, high-level searches. They even sent us a letter, and I appreciate their honest feedback and input, advising, their letter said, to not even do a presidential search at this time. I'm hearing what they're saying, I'm hearing what ASNC student body says, and I, the students, we care about you, absolutely. And I hear what you're saying. And what I'm saying is contrary to what you're requesting, and I acknowledge that. And I want to doubly emphasize, student involvement from ASNC will be on the final presidential search committee. And that committee, that traditional inclusive search process is absolutely, I'm supportive of that right now. But I don't, and I will be, not just now, but I will, I am. I don't think it's best to make a change in presidential leadership right now. And I believe it's not in the best interest of NIC, and it's tough on the applicants due to the timing of the academic cycle, too. In addition, the State Board of Education has encouraged us to focus on accreditation. Our accreditation addresses governance, and it's important for the community to hear this. Dr. Sabaly did his dissertation on board governance, and I trust him to lead us through this time. Housing's hard to find for a new president, and it's even harder to find in a winter timeframe. I think we need to consider a July 2023 timeline for placement of a new permanent president. I know it's controversial with this discussion, but I'm making a motion to open the discussion. So I'm making a motion to table both the determination of the new permanent president's qualifications, which is, and the selection of the presidential search firm until the November timeframe of 2022. That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, the motion is to table, so there is no discussion on that. We will go to a vote.
I would amend that motion. I move to amend that motion. It's really outrageous what you've just lined up here, Mr. Chair.
What I've lined up?
No discussion on a presidential search firm, really? That's what the three of you are up to tonight?
You're welcome to do your discussion now.
Okay, okay, under discussion then, under the motion. Three months ago, the majority of this board fired President McLennan without cause. Two days later, on September 24th, this board held a public meeting, and we appointed Dr. Burns as acting president. We also signed a contract with her that included an agreement to immediately conduct a national search for a permanent president. On October 12th, this board formally adopted the resolution commemorating the terms and conditions of Dr. Burns' appointment as acting president. Trustee Barnes made a motion at the September 24th meeting to authorize a national search for a permanent president and to convene a search committee led by at least two board members with the support of the administration. These commitments were made. Since that time, the majority of this board has done everything in its power to break the agreement made to the public, to our employees, and to Dr. Burns. The critical time concerns around the search process has been explained to this board numerous times. Faculty, Senate, and Staff Assembly have taken votes of confidence in this board over this issue. Our student body presented before the board tonight a resolution demanding this board begin a national search. The public, our employees, and our students have standing on this issue. I believe it constitutes extreme malpractice by this board if we do not select a firm tonight and proceed immediately, meaning now, with the hiring of a presidential search firm. I spoke with Angela Provost this afternoon with the Poly Group. Actually, she said they would be very interested in doing the search and would be able to do the search starting in January. Her request is that we're just transparent with our constituent groups on campus, that we would need to get started in early January, and they might not all be back on campus as we get started. If they are comfortable with that, that's not going to harm our process at all. But they are invited to be part of the discussion, and the Poly Group very much would be willing to move forward. It is clear, very clear, the majority of this board is doing everything they can to not appoint and do a search process, not find a permanent president. You went through a process that both trustee Howard and I strongly objected to for an interim, and you're trying to foist an interim, no offense to Dr. Sabaly, he's a nice person, but you're trying to foist an interim long-term on the entire community and on this campus and on this board. That is just unacceptable. Accreditation standards didn't just speak about governance, it also talked about our ability to hire leadership. We have not gone through this process, and if you think it won't be a concern with our creditors that once again, the majority of this board refuses to do a presidential search, well, I think you're mistaken, and I think you're going to harm us greatly with this decision tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
I don't want to just echo what trustee Wood just said, but I want to reinforce it. Every one of the trustees signed a document that we presented to Dr. Burns that said we will immediately move forward with a national search for a president. That was our word. That was our commitment to her to take on the responsibilities that we asked her to take on on very short notice. Does this board not honor its word? Does this board, at its own convenience, when it says, no, let's elongate it till 2023, we'll start the process in 2022? When this entire community is waiting to finally get into a recognized national search for a president for a long-term position? There are temporary changes that are being made already with the provost position that has been said it's temporary. We're losing qualified people at an unprecedented rate. We need stability because we have something beyond an interim president, and there's no reason, no reason, to delay the search process. The Poly Group has indicated, as trustee Wood indicated, and Chair, they can go on with that. I can tell you that ACCT has done it in the past, and I called them, and they're ready to start a search at any time. In fact, the best time to start the search is in the winter months, January, February, when the people who are interested in moving from their position are willing to come forward, make application without interfering with their existing employment. So this is the time when we should be moving forward with a presidential search. And to delay it is, quite frankly, outrageous, and the purpose for it is nonexistent.
Chair.
Trustee McKenzie.
I believe this board is honoring its word and did start the presidential search process immediately. And we have people on the... Even when a group of individuals complained NWCCU, even they responded that this board gets to select the president. There's, I think it's best, the plan I've laid out, and I believe in my motion.
Mr. Chair.
I find it ironic that people have sharply criticized certain members of this board for the votes that they've taken and the actions that they've taken. But yet, want to run headlong into a new search and to select a permanent new president with the same five people on the board, with the same five people voting. I'm guessing you're confident you're going to like the votes that the five of us make. So you've suddenly got a lot more confidence in all five of us, and certainly in three of us, that many of you have criticized intensely. So I just find that ironic, that you want me to lead the charge as co-chair of the selection committee for the new president, for the permanent president. I do find that interesting with the criticism that has come, that that's your desire. So I just share that, there's a certain irony there that I find.
Mr. Chair.
Call the question.
Trustee, call the question.
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
How many times do we need to speak, trustee? This is why Robert's Rules of Order is coming around.
Point of order, you do not have the floor.
Thank you.
Trustee McKenzie, please stop.
Mr. Chair.
He is correct, though, there are rules for debate that we will try to adhere to better in the future, which will curtail endless discussion. Trustee Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't... Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't, tried to follow what you were saying, that you find it ironic that I would want you to be on a search. Don't find it ironic. I, I think that you represent a certain perspective, and we have to have these perspectives in a legitimate search process. That process will include a lot of constituent groups, a lot of community members in business and industry, people that are relying on us to have a fair search process, and then those candidates will be brought forward to us to make a decision on. It will be the same five trustees, if we move appropriately, and don't delay this any farther. I guess the motion that's on the floor gives the appearance of, well, can we wait beyond the next election, and then there won't be two of the trustees, maybe, if they don't run again or if they're defeated? It's really bad form. I think what we have to do is honor what we said we would do back in September when we appointed Dr. Burns as acting president. We even signed a contract. We've got to move forward with the national search. I trust the trustees to listen to the community, listen to the constituent groups, look at the final candidates, which very likely could include Dr. Savali, and make a good decision. It's only going to hurt us to continue to delay this. It shows a lack of leadership.
I would disagree, and I think we're trying to stabilize the college, and it's, it's not a political decision. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say nay.
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 The motion is defeated.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
I'd like to make a motion to reach out to the Poly Group and consider, or ask them to start the presidential search. They have given us a good proposal that's most affordable out of all of them. I believe that we should employ them immediately, and so my motion is to adopt the Poly Group's proposal and have them start tomorrow.
I'll second the motion to retain the Poly Group.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Trustee Wood, you made the motion. Your first comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said, I did talk to Angela Provart at the Poly Group. She did assure me that yes, this is something they could do immediately. I've also had an opportunity to ask about search committees that have been going on on campus using the Poly Group for our provost, our dean positions, our VP positions, and I'm not sure what all they're working on, but what I have been told is they're doing a really good job. They're very reliable. They're trustworthy. We could feel comfortable with the, with this group, and so I, I trust the people and the people that I talked to today, that I have confidence in this group, and I'd like to see us proceed with this. We've put it off for too long. We absolutely need to move forward on behalf of our community and our campus.
Chair.
Trustee McKenzie.
I feel very uncomfortable with what I've heard at this meeting about one board, one member on this board of trustees would call a search firm directly instead of having a conversation with them in front of the other board for the other board to hear, and for that, I would at least like to have a group discussion with the search firm before we select on them.
I, I would actually have to echo that. It actually appears, I think, maybe two different trustees individually called two different search firms, which to me is interference with the contract. That should all be done through Chris Martin at this time, Vice President Martin. So I, I don't think that was appropriate for individual trustees to reach out directly to search firms. I think that was unusual. At one time, we talked about if we had a subcommittee that would interview them or get additional information, or how we would do that, and we never did determine how to get additional information on these different companies to, to discern who we would want to utilize of, of the five at that time that we had. So, and I, again, maybe there's another irony here. I have the letter from the Poly Group that was sent to the college to President Savali just within the last week, and yet now unsubstantiated new information by a trustee that went directly to them that no one's seen before, no one's heard, no one's seen any documentation or anything. It's, it's just one trustee saying, and then I have another trustee kind of giving me a, a second-hand account of another conversation. I'm very uncomfortable with both those, and I, I'm not going to base a decision on either of those. I, I have empirical data. I have a documentation right here that says the Poly Group, and it's got her letter here, and inside this, it says, "Christmas holidays and summer are historically poor times to recruit." Seems like it's long time off, a lot for transparency, we got to wait, you know, it's...
Mr. Chair.
So I, I have, I take exception to that at this point. I, I don't think that process, I think we broke down all process there, and I, I think it was inappropriate.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Angela Provart with the Poly Group is very willing to speak to all of the trustees. In fact, we could probably call her if we wanted tonight, but we don't need to do that. I, I didn't make it up. I guess that's what you're alluding, that I made up a conversation with her. I didn't. She verified that yes, they could start in January, and she asked me to make sure that the constituent groups would be, understand that the most important thing to the Poly Group is the transparency of the process. Some of them may be off-campus when we first would initially start. It was important to her that we reached out to constituent groups, and they understood that, and they could make their own accommodations. So I would honor what she said. I, I, like I said, I'm not making it up, and my motion stands.
Well, I think, I think the trustee that I'm speaking to misconstrued what I said. I didn't accuse anybody of making anything up. What I point out is that had I or one of the other trustees had quote, "broken process" or "procedure or protocol," but I've been very upset. I, I use an example when trustee McKenzie even found another individual that was offering to do the new trustee zones, and there was a real upset that there was somehow a direct connection between trustee McKenzie and that individual, even though they'd had no prior relationship, and there was an assumption that they were friends, but they were not. Didn't really even know each other.
Mr. Chair.
So I'm just talking about process here.
We need to get off top, on, back on topic.
This is...
We're, we're there. It's about process, sir. That's all. So, holding on to process. Trustee McKenzie.
For discussion, I'm going to advocate that this motion fails, and the reason why I'm advocating for that is because I intend to make another motion where the two board of trustees, and Dr. Burns, and the president of ASNC meet and maybe interview each of the proposals and come back with a suggestion.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
You know, if it's not one attempt to delay, it's another, and it's pretty obvious that you're just trying to delay this whole process so that you can get two different trustees in next November. Now, we could be honest about it, or we could be obtuse about it. I don't care. It's pretty obvious. We don't need any investigation of the Poly Group or anybody else. They're valid. They've been doing work on this campus. We've got a history of what they do. To investigate them or interview them is just one of those attempts to delay. Quite honestly, I think this board has to make a decision to do something about the presidential search. I think we've already decided to move forward with it. We defeated the motion to table. I think that what, what, the best, the best cure for what's going on, on this campus is for us to move forward in a traditional way in which everybody who's observing us understands that we are honoring the processes that have enabled us to find good candidates in the past, and that means to go out for a national search as soon as possible and keep the, the transitional president in, on a short timeframe. So I, I would, I would like to see us move forward and vote on the Poly Group.
Chair.
No, I was just calling to him.
Trustee McKenzie.
I do find this specific group, more information would be beneficial on who else is using them, because I know other VPs, I believe, are utilizing search firms and stuff. So I think it would be good information to, to know about that. And I also know, I believe, we've, since we are using them for other VP searches, that I kind of am nervous that it's, to put this respectfully, was done in a way to force the board's hand instead of giving a fair and transparent opportunity to the other bidders in the process. And I think that that is crucial for people to still work with us in the future, to have that faith. If you recall, December of this year, there were people who wouldn't even be willing to bid on the other construction process because they felt that the bidder was predetermined, the, the rewarding, awarding contract was predetermined. If you recall, that was in the December board meeting, when we were talking about, I remember that because that left an impression on me. So any appearance of that, I think we need to address, and I don't like the feeling that this board's hand is being forced, and I highly recommend...
Chairman Banducci, point of privilege, please, not to interrupt you, sir.
Trust.
May we take a five-minute recess for biological purposes?
That's what we were just discussing. We were in the middle of a motion, but yeah, I think we're just going to have to do it. Okay, we're going to take, it's, we'll reconvene at eight o'clock.
Within October, starting to do the interviews. That was the information that we shared with the board. I want to encourage the board to make sure that they're following process and that historically, presidential searches have gone through the president's office with Shannon running them. And if people are going to be reaching out to the search firms, that should be done through our chief human relations officer, Karen Hubbard.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
I'd like to restate the motion, just so everyone can remember.
I'd like to make a point of order, though. I think it's, the other trustee had the floor at the time. I think it's only right to give him the opportunity to finish his thought.
Sure.
You're referring to trustee McKenzie, correct?
Yes, sir.
Trustee McKenzie, the floor is still yours, sir.
I thank you for the floor, for resuming. I was speaking at the end. I do have two questions regarding discussion is, I believe, Dr. Sabaly, what was the group and the timeline that they suggested? What was that again?
They suggested that in July 2022, you develop and approve the position profile. This is the Poly Group. They suggested that you develop and approve the calendar in July 2022. They said the college signs the contract and it receives in PGI in July 22. August and September, prepare electronic mailings, post the profile with the Poly Group associated organizations. College posts profile on the college website, post profile on the group website. In October, date to be announced or date to be determined, close the date for the applicants. Applicant ratings due to Poly Group office. Committee identifies semifinalists, finalizes interview questions. Interviews with semifinalists, committee identifies final candidates. November, on-campus interviews, final decision, negotiation and hire. January 23, selected candidate begins post. That was the timeline that the Poly Group sent last week.
All the other floor.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. I've already stated that I got clarification from the Poly Group. And this earlier letter is they're not sticking to those timelines. They've made it clear that they could start in January. So I'd like to restate my motion that I would direct the administration to engage the Poly Group immediately to begin a presidential search.
There's no other comments or questions. I'm going to reiterate the fact that I thought it was highly unusual that we suddenly have trustees making direct solicitations of contractors and reaching out. And that was, in my opinion, it's a compromise of the process, it's a conflict of interest, and it's a terrible breach of protocol and process and procedure. And if certain other trustees had done that, there would be a high U.
Mr. Chair, are you here to just berate me?
I'm not berating you. I'm not even addressing you. Please, you're out of order. I haven't said your name.
I'm out of order.
I'm not addressing you specifically.
Could we get to the motion?
I'm allowed to comment. You have talked at length, as you usually do. You've told us you're going to be very vocal, and you will be, and you are, and that's okay. We give you plenty of time to speak. Everybody does.
Mr. Chair.
I'm usually the last to speak.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, you're going to chime in too and jump on me too now? You've had plenty of time to speak also.
You indicated we would not attack one another.
I wasn't trying to. I was being attacked. I asked her to stop.
He's speaking to the process.
I'm speaking to the process, thank you. I wasn't speaking.
You're attacking the trustee.
Okay, I see. You know, I had this chat earlier. You guys do a nice one, too. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Are there any comments or questions?
State the motion one more time.
Sure. I make a motion, direct the administration to engage the Poly Group immediately to begin the presidential search.
What, point of clarification. What does begin the presidential search immediately entail? What does that mean?
It means engage with them tomorrow, sign a contract tomorrow.
And that's the group that's doing the other VP searches?
They're doing dean searches.
Other dean searches.
And they've offered a discount because they're doing other searches.
Can I call a question?
Do we know what are the customers that are affiliated with NIC that they have?
I would say it's probably not appropriate to talk about the Poly Group and who they're doing searches for at the moment.
The point of order, the question has been called.
Point of order is noted. I will honor it, although in reading Robert's Rules of Orders, you do not always have to stop debate just because the question's been called, but we will in this instance. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Next item on the agenda is under new business. It's CAB II. It's information slash action for Head Start. Vice President Martin, sir.
Chair Banducci, members of the board. This evening, coming to the board, basically with the discussion, asking for the board's direction on regarding compliance with all Head Start standards for vaccination and masking. Just a little detail, as in the board tab, the college recently was informed by the Office of Head Start that they'd issued new performance guidelines that included the requirement for Head Start staff, contractors and volunteers to be vaccinated against COVID-19, and universal masking for all individuals two years of age and older. We ran into some challenges with the policy on communicable diseases and the board's motion to rescind the college-wide mask mandate. So at this time, we have not been in compliance with this standard as it is not, it's not in congruence with the board policy and the motion to rescind masking.
Chris, Vice President Martin. My, clarify for me. My understanding is that while there's some rulings right now, there's no punitive action or anything, or no action is being taken, at least until the new year. Is that correct? Is there?
Chair Banducci, we met with the Region 10 Office of Head Start and explained our situation, and they shared with us that they understand that this is a period of implementation for all programs. And so at this time, there's not punitive damage against the college with the understanding that we're working through implementing the performance standards.
Do we have an end date for that timeline for implementation?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Would we expect that to be through to the new year, potentially, and shift in semester?
Chair Banducci, my understanding, my personal understanding from that conversation with the Office of Head Start and Region 10 was that they were giving us the good faith time to become compliant with the regulation.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
Chris, we have a policy that says that we don't mandate masks on campus. And now the federal government is coming through and saying, with regard to Head Start and maybe even area agency on the aging, that you have to have masks under certain conditions and for certain populations. Is there a way that we can resolve this problem?
Chair Banducci, trustee Howard, essentially, the Office of Head Start gave us three options, essentially. One of those was that we choose to comply. And we've worked with Head Start to develop a process where we believe we could become in compliance for all of our Head Start locations without impacting the general campus and other employees and students across campus. So we believe we have an option to comply. We have an option to choose to return the grant, and they would work with us to do an orderly transition to relieve NIC of its responsibility of being the granting agency for Head Start. The third option would be the federal government could choose, if we continue to not comply, to relinquish the grant from us and pull it back as well. So we would have the choice to comply, to voluntarily step away, or it could be taken from the college.
If we were, you said you had, option number one was to, you had a way to comply. Would you give us that mechanism, please?
Chair Banducci and trustee Howard, we do have a, we've worked through the ways that we could comply. So it's not fully baked yet, and I'll own that, but our suggestion would be to remove the Head Start classroom out of the Lakeside Children's Center and relocate it to the Harding Head Start Building. We would accept declinations for medical or religious exemptions from Head Start employees who were not vaccinated or chose not to be vaccinated. We would accept those declinations. We would institute weekly testing for all employees who received a declination and were not vaccinated, per the guidelines, on a weekly basis. And we would implement the masking of all Head Start employees, volunteers, contractors and children ages two and up.
So basically, Head Start's going to be treated as an entirely separate entity from the general population of NIC?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And that's what your mechanism is designed to do, is to separate it completely?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion, then. I move that NIC allow the Head Start program to comply fully with the revised performance standards and the interim final rule issued on November 28, 2021, for vaccination and masking to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. Further, I move that the board authorize and approve the relocation of the Head Start classroom currently operating in the Lakeside Children's Center to the Harding Head Start Center. And that the Head Start can utilize American Recovery Plan funds to pay for the testing, and that the college will work with the Head Start to develop procedures for the collection of vaccination records of employees and volunteers, create testing protocols and protocols for the granting of medical and religious exemptions in alignment with the Head Start performance standards. Mr. Chris, would those provisions satisfy the separation that you're talking about?
Chair Banducci.
All right.
Trustee Howard, we believe that they will.
All right, then, so moved.
I'll second that motion.
Ken, do you have any further comments, since it's your motion? You get first crack at it.
No, I think it's already been described. We've got a choice. We can lose Head Start, or we can separate them out as a separate entity and maintain the service that we have to these communities of the Head Start programs. I think to not, not separate them out is to remove the opportunity for the Head Start programs to service the population in this area.
Are there any comments or questions?
Chair Banducci.
Sorry. No, you go right ahead. He didn't see me.
Trustee Barnes. I'll come back to you, Kristi.
Yeah, Vice President Martin. You may not even know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask you one, because you've been involved with it. Does the Head Start organization have any recourse themselves within their organization to push back against government mandations, mandates like this? Do they have a recourse?
Chair Banducci, trustee Barnes, the short answer is no, we do not. Because it's a fully funded program, it's all federal dollars. And so the performance standards, when we accept the grant as the grantee, we are also accepting that we will follow the performance standards that come with that grant. And so we don't have a mechanism in which to push back on those performance standards. There is currently, during the interim period, the interim rulemaking period, we have the chance to offer feedback. And we can share that we're not in favor of this, or that we are in favor of this, or any, we can offer feedback on the rule, but at this time, the rule is in place. And so it's an interim rulemaking form. So to answer your question, two things. If it's an actual performance standard, we don't have a choice. But because it's in the interim rulemaking state right now, we can offer our feedback as a grantee.
May I ask one additional question?
Go ahead.
Do you happen to know how the government or whoever enforces these mandates? How are these enforced?
Chair Banducci, trustee Barnes, with the Head Start performance standards, we have regular compliance audits that, in this case, the Region 10 Office of Head Start would come and evaluate our program. And so NIC has actually been well-known for the quality of the program they run and are adherent to the performance standards, but that's how this is monitored and checked. So they will come, they will do an evaluation, they will check to make sure that we're following all of the protocols related to Head Start.
Thank you.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I noticed Beth Ann's here tonight, too, so I may ask for the privilege of Beth Ann to answer some questions. From what I understand, Head Start right now is serving, and I could have the number wrong, Beth Ann, maybe you can correct me, they're serving 280 children in the Panhandle, aside from education, with medical and dental care. I understand there's maybe 90 employees, is that right? 90 employees, people in our community that work there? If we don't find a way to carve out from an internal policy we created for them to carry on with services to these children, we're going to be responsible for ending outreach services, and you've heard from the public tonight how devastating that would be to them. I had a question on the relocation of the Head Start classroom that's currently operating in Lakeside Children's Center, moving it to the Harding Center. I just need a little clarification on that. Why do we have to, why do we have to move them? And what kind of an impact on those families to have to, I don't know how many kids, and what does it do to them to have to pick up and move?
Chair Banducci, trustee Wood, we currently serve 16 children in the NIC Children's Center through Head Start. The rationale for relocating that Head Start classroom to the Harding Center is primarily related to employee morale and ease of operation. And so with the Head Start performance guidelines, of all the children in the Head Start, excuse me, in the Lakeside Children's Center, 16 of them would have to be masked. We're currently not masking children in the Children's Center today, to my knowledge. While I believe that most of our employees in the Children's Center have chosen voluntarily to wear masks, it's not being required by NIC as a whole. And so we were trying to avoid the situation where we've got two different sets of rules, both for children and for employees working in the exact same location.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Barnes.
My understanding is that trustee Howard drafted this motion here? Where did this motion come from?
Actually, I asked President Sabaly to draft the motion, and I think he had Chris draft the motion.
I see.
And what I asked for was, what elements do we need to consider in order to effectuate saving the Head Start program? And that's what I was given.
Yeah. I do not want to do anything that would threaten the effectiveness of the Head Start program. I just want to make sure that we're not, as you said, in a position where we're trying to accommodate two policies, one of which myself and many others vehemently are opposed to because of government mandate and government overreach. I just want to make sure that those who are involved in Head Start know, you know, they have their rights and the ability to push back, to whatever extent, to do what they need to do, but we're not in a position of being two-faced on this, and I don't want to put the college at any risk. So does this motion then kind of get us out of that pickle?
Chair Banducci, trustee Barnes, it gets us out of the pickle where the college-wide rescension of a mask mandate puts us in jeopardy with Head Start. The other piece that you spoke of, I think that pickle still remains, which is this would essentially require our Head Start employees to be masked as well as become vaccinated or declare a declination, which we are not doing currently as a general rule across the college.
Very good. So we would provide a liberal declination policy, from what I hear.
Chair Banducci, trustee Barnes, our intent would be, and as these rules get developed, our intent would be to offer medical or religious declinations to any employee who requested them. As part of the performance standards, any employee who requested a declination and received it would have to submit to weekly testing. That's the out.
So medical exemption or religious accommodation, at least that's how we term them in the service, that's what we're doing over at the base, and we would have the weekly testing and we would pay for that? Would that be on-site, or how would we accomplish the testing?
Chair Banducci, we're currently looking at procuring a service that will allow us to do that. What we have found so far is, number one, Head Start received American Recovery Act or CARES funding that could pay for the weekly testing. So that would be something that we would provide through the program. The testing mechanisms that we've looked at would be administered, you would test, you would record that on an app, and then the college would have a, Head Start, excuse me, would have a dashboard showing, in this case, Chris Martin was tested, and what the results of my test were, so that I'm eligible to work that week.
Chris, just out of curiosity, where would those tests actually be conducted?
Chair Banducci, they are personalized, they're personally administered.
Like at home or something?
Or in the office, or when you get to work in the morning, however that would work, but the individual personally administers that using the results in that app, is how we have, again, this has not been procured yet, but with the vendors that we've looked at, that's what it would allow us to do.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, trustees? I don't see any, Chris, anything else to add, sir?
No, sir.
Dr. Sabaly? Okay. We have a motion in front of us. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries.
Chair Banducci.
Yes, sir.
If I may, many people this evening spoke about the difficult role that the board finds themselves in, in really difficult times. And so this is one of those situations that's extremely difficult, and we acknowledge that. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the Head Start program, our employees and the families that we serve. I know this was not an easy decision, but I really, really appreciate and respect your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Chair prerogative for 12 seconds. This has been something that's consumed a lot of our time the last couple of weeks, and we have looked at it, and it's been a tremendous concern and burden because we've wanted to be able to maintain our relationship with Head Start. I know Dr. Sabaly has been in touch with the folks down at CSI, they're the other community college that has Head Start. And so Dean Fisher, he's been working with the president, I've been working with Laird Stone, the chairman of the board down there, who happens to be an attorney himself, and he was reading the court decision out of Georgia. And so this has all been, we've been following them and trying to see what they're doing and being consistent with what CSI, College of Southern Idaho's been doing, because we're the two with the Head Start programs here in the state of Idaho for the community colleges. So just for everybody to know, as to what I was referring to, maybe you can hear later, we do want to keep working with Head Start. So we heard you, we were already there. Next item is the NWCCU site visit. Dr. Sabaly.
Thank you. The site visit is Tuesday, January 18. The chair, we do not know, they'll be sending down four evaluators, we do not know who the chair is yet, but the chair will be setting up and conducting forums with the president, the board, the foundation board, staff, faculty, faculty assembly leaders, students, academic student affairs leadership, financial leadership and HR leadership. Yesterday, an online forum opened up for faculty and staff, as well as students, to provide anonymous comments to the NWCCU. We're also sending out a communication to students this week to give them information on how they can, too, access the anonymous forum, which will remain open through January 16. We will get a preliminary report 10 days out, so January 8 of that, and then they will try to get us the rest of those comments on January 16, when that closes. So if we need to respond to them, we can. This event and this comment forum is only for active members of the college community, not the community at large. This is at the directive and request of the NWCCU. This is their fact-finding work, and so they set the parameters of this visit. By February 15, we expect to receive some report from the visiting team of their findings. We'll have an opportunity to review this report and provide corrections of factual information if needed. The report will then be sent to the NWCCU Board of Commissioners for deliberations and any potential action. Will be formed of the Board of Commissioners' decision in a letter of action. We still need to submit an ad hoc report for the first complaint letter by August 1. And that is the information that I can provide, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Wood.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Sabaly, it's my understanding that NIC will bear all financial cost for the NWCCU site visit. I assume it includes airfare, lodging, meals for the team of individuals, and I didn't know if you had identified how much it will cost and how our current budget will accommodate it.
That is not true. They are paying for the entire visit, and we will bill them for the lunch that we even give them that day. The only thing the college is providing is transportation from the hotel in Coeur d'Alene to campus.
I would prefer that we don't bill them for lunch, but.
They told us we could, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
They told us to, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is an information action item under trustee residency, and Mr. Mark Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In this community, there has been raised the issue of trustee residents, whether certain trustees reside in their zone and within the district. This is an issue that has been in the Coeur d'Alene press. It is one that has been at least looked at, in part, by the State Board of Education. And the issue really comes to whether the trustees in question, and that would be trustee Barnes and trustee Howard, whether they are qualified, based on residency, to continue to be trustees of this college. Now, this is an issue that has been raised, it's being discussed, we've heard comments on it over the last couple of meetings, there have been numerous references in the local press, and I know this is still an issue out there. And it's an issue that the board needs to address and to provide some certainty to the community and to this institution. And because of the uncertainty that this issue raises, particularly involving the potential for votes that have happened and votes that will happen in the future regarding trustees, it's my recommendation that the board address this sooner rather than later. So I'm really asking, at this point, that the board would authorize me to specifically request that the Attorney General's Office investigate whether certain board members are residents of the district or and residents of their zones, and that the Attorney General provide a legal opinion based upon the results of that investigation. I realize that the State Board of Education has looked at some aspects of this and has provided a Q and A document that was in the paper recently that does not address specifically the issues that we need addressed. So these issues are, do our board members qualify to continue as trustees? And I think we need an investigation, and we need to know up or down whether this is an issue. It may be that this is not an issue. It may be that this is not an issue, and let's get finality on that. If it is an issue, let's find out sooner rather than later. So that's my request, that you authorize me to make that application to the Attorney General's Office to see if they will investigate and provide a legal opinion on this.
All right. Trustee Howard.
Everybody has heard about the residence questions. It is raised, hopefully, a needless issue, but it must be answered. And it must be answered, I think, by somebody of authority, because it involves legal as well as factual determinations in order for us to satisfy the public and members of the board that we are in compliance with the statutes in the state. So I move to authorize our attorney to, in conjunction with the State Attorney General's Office, to determine the various issues surrounding the residency issue of myself and trustee Barnes and any other trustee, quite frankly, who has done what we've done. We've sold our houses and we've moved. And so what does that do? How does that affect our continued ability to sit as trustees? It's a question not just of curiosity, but whether our 3-2 votes on this board, if we shouldn't be sitting here and we are not authorized to vote, it could affect the conduct of this board and the authorizations that we've already engaged in or we would in the future. I don't want to put that at risk if we can help it. Let's get a determination by the Attorney General's Office and Mark Lyons and find out where we're at. So that, my motion is that we authorize Mark Lyons to engage with the State Attorney General to determine the issues surrounding the residency issues raised.
Second. Trustee Barnes, that was you?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I have a motion, I have a second.
Question?
Trustee Howard, just a moment. You were the motion raider, do you have anything else to add, sir?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. Trustee McKenzie.
For discussion's sake, is there a reason it doesn't go to the county clerk, Brandon? I believe that there was a very similar question this past election.
Yeah. If you're asking me, he's not an attorney to give us a legal opinion nor do an investigation. And quite honestly, you don't have to be able to vote in order to be a trustee. There are issues way beyond his authority and jurisdiction. The Attorney General's Office and Mark Lyons, I think, are better suited.
If we may, just converse.
Certainly.
I'm familiar with the prior investigation, and it was much more than just county clerk, Brandon. He employed very similar legal resources. And I just make the motion to amend that it goes to county clerk, Brandon, who I'm sure will consult with Mark and everyone.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion for an amendment to the motion.
I'm looking for a second.
Okay. Do I have a second?
For the purposes of discussion, I'll second that.
I have a second from trustee Barnes. It's your amendment, trustee McKenzie, you get first crack at it, sir?
I just think...
Do you have anything else to add?
I just think it's more appropriate and for county clerk, Brandon, to address it.
Trustee McKenzie.
Trustee.
Trustee.
Banducci, it's getting late.
Trustee Barnes.
Question to Mark Lyons. Do you have anything to add or enlighten us about that amendment of whether the county clerk can be beneficial in this process?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Barnes, I don't think it's, that the county clerk should be involved in this necessarily. This really involves a state law, this is, this would be, the interpretation would be Title 33, Chapter 21, which is the community college statutes on this. They are a little unique from other boards, other educational institutions, including the universities and the K-12 school districts. There are some areas where the, we have to look to other laws that are state laws, not local laws, maybe to perhaps analogize. So I think the, this is mostly, there needs to be the basic facts, which is, which shouldn't be too difficult, because I think both trustees or any trustees who would be subject to investigation will certainly cooperate. But it boils down to a legal analysis. The Attorney General's Office has deputies in a variety of different areas, including the Secretary of State, which is responsible for elections statewide. So I have reached out to the senior deputy AG and have been advised that if requested, this is something that the Attorney General's Office would do, and if, and I'm assuming that that would be the appropriate place. And in my opinion, as an attorney analyzing what I think is largely a legal issue, my recommendation is to go with the Attorney General Office and not involve the local county officers.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to commend both trustee Howard and trustee Barnes stepping up and making the motion and the second. You clearly are trying to be transparent. I mean, it's, I'm sure you're uncomfortable, but I do appreciate that you both stepped up and did that. And I would, I too would like to follow the advice of our attorney. I don't want to see anything interjected that could be construed as political, so let's just work with the state. That seems like the best option. And they would, they have much more knowledge of the state laws, so I'd like to follow Mr. Lyons' advice.
Chair Banducci.
All right. Trustee McKenzie.
The definition to me of keeping politics out of this would be to give it to the county clerk, Brandon, who I have absolute trust in. When they even did the recount, they came up with the exact same vote count. And if you want transparency and trust, I would say our county clerk office would be the one to spearhead and engage the appropriate authorities who would make the definitive answer.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing done. We have a motion. We have a second. All those...
We had an amendment.
Point of, point of...
I'm sorry.
Information. Amendment.
You are, you guys are both correct. I had a motion, I had a second, I had amendment and a second. So we need to vote on the amendment first. Sorry, my oversight. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
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 The motion fails. The amendment fails. Back to the original motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the board chair report. I haven't said too much at this time, the last couple of sessions, but I have a couple of things I'm going to say this evening. One is, I thought we had a very successful legislative send-off the other night. I'd like to thank Laura Rumppler for the work that she did on that. And it was nice to see some new faces. We saw some legislators that we haven't seen in a long time, and we're working hard to build some bridges and some relationships with our local legislators. It was well-attended, and I appreciate the partnership with Lewis and Clark State and the University of Idaho to help sponsor the venue and the Chamber of Commerce. We are selling a lot of tickets apparently for the big raffle. I appreciate that. I'd like to thank everybody that's supporting the college by buying those. It has been emphasized tonight that our college is actually doing quite well. I'll reiterate a couple of those comments. Our enrollment appears to be trending up. Looks like we'll be positive this next semester despite original projections that we'd be down. My understanding is we'd even be a little bit higher, but some of our CTE students are getting jobs. So that's the success for, we're putting people in the workforce and they're getting good jobs. We had the audit with Aid Bailey. I would call that a five-star report. Chris Martin did a great job there, Sarah Garcia. Our finances are very solid, we look very good for this year. We have some additional funds and a couple CARES buckets that are still there. Our capital, our capital construction fund, capital investment fund, I think we're somewhere between eight and 10 million. Looking pretty solid. Foundation's looking pretty good. We just, they just did another bunch of grants today. Appreciate them doing that. Last I heard, I think their checkbook bank account was somewhere over 20 million, I don't know the exact number. So for anybody, you know, there's a lot of issues with this accreditation. They poked at our enrollment, it's actually going up. Financial's doing well. COVID masks, actually COVID's doing this at the campus. Healthy, rates are down. We've got in-person teaching. We've got sports, we've got music, large events. We're going to have tri-state this weekend. Pretty excited about that. Basketball's playing, wrestlers are wrestling. So I would say, on those fronts, the college is doing quite well, and it's very positive. And the last thing I would comment on is that I still don't understand some of the attacks on the college itself by some of our friends and allies. I'm a military man, I've had a lot of training in a leader, leadership training, tactics, strategy. You know, sometimes you hit them straight on, sometimes you make a flanking maneuver, sometimes it's a combination. Seems like we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, I don't know, cutting off our nose to spite our face at times. We're, we're seeming to be attacking certain individuals and groups. At the same time, we're taking down our own institution. I don't understand the logic in that and why some people would sacrifice the school and its accreditation, or even teachers' jobs or staff's jobs if their sole intent is to make a point or even to get to me or whoever. At the end of the day, guys like me, we'll finish our term, we walk away, we have our lives, we have our careers, our jobs, our businesses. But the people here on the campus are the ones actually getting impacted by the negativity and the things that are going on. Kind of hurting yourself, or the people that are your friends are hurting you. At some point, you may ask them to stop helping you. Because in the long run, it reflects on all of us, but really, it's going to hit you guys that are the boots on the ground. You can yell at the trustees, but we're elected, I'm here till 2024. So I just point that out. Think about the optics and don't be myopic, it's a 10,000-foot view, not a 10-foot view. Support your college, encourage people to see the amazing institution this is and the successes that we're having. Encourage others to do the same and to not publicly downgrade us or denigrate us. The more we shout negative things, the more attention we get negatively, and people start to feed off of that and will react to it. So I would encourage everybody to pull together and support the administration and the leaders here and the instructors, and it's a two-way street. And that's what I have to say, other than I hope you have a very blessed holiday break and Merry Christmas. Are there any remarks for the good of the order? Trustee Howard.
I want to direct my remarks to Chris Martin, Graydon Stanley, Lita Burns, and Christie Doyle. I'm sorry I missed your aloha party. And I'm sorry to see you leave. I understand that there's a future, a bright future for all of you ahead of you, and I encourage you to take it on with, and Graydon, you can't leave until you buy my breakfast. You owe me a breakfast. But you are what has made NIC great. You really are. You may not realize it, but the campus and the community have come to trust you and credit you with the success of NIC in large part. I know it's a team effort, and all of you have team members that you work with, and it's not individual. But without your efforts and without your contributions to NIC, we would be different today. And, you know, it's not about the time that you've spent, anybody can spend time, but it's the accomplishments. When you look back at what's happened during the tenure, and I'm not going to be able to list all of them, but some of the obvious ones are the Parker Center, the DeArmond Building, the Meyer Expansion, those are, those are brick and mortar things, but, you know, the board said, "We need to do this," and you did it. We sat back and watched you accomplish great things, and I want to thank you for that. I can't thank you enough, quite frankly. I wish Christie was here so that she could hear this. There are others who have contributed to this, and I'm not going to be able to thank them personally the way I am able to thank you, but I did not want to lose this opportunity to say to you, thank you so much for what you've done for NIC. It's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you. Thank you. I hope that makes you blush.
I think he needs a hanky. Well deserved. Anything else from anybody? I also, I'm sorry I missed, I was unavailable also. I understand it went very well. Well deserved. Goodbye. Anybody else on the board here? On that, I will declare the meeting adjourned.